There you go. You're welcome.
Good evening, all. Welcome to the Wednesday, November 28th, meeting of the Chelmsford Planning Board. We are being recorded, of course, by Chelmsford Telemedia. And thank you for coming out tonight. And about the time I start talking about this, doing this preliminary stuff, it'll actually be seven o'clock and we can start doing real business. Is there anybody that has recording, that is recording this meeting tonight? If you are, just let us know. We like to keep track of who's recording us. Okay. Well, I declare at seven o'clock. Okay. First item on our agenda is Administrative Review 152 Turnpike. Is that you, Melissa?
Yes. Good evening, members of the board. For the record, my name is Attorney Melissa Robbins. I'm from the law firm of DeShane &amp; Farrell. This address should look very familiar to most of you. I'm sorry. It'll pull us away from my mouth a little bit. We're here tonight for determination of applicability in accordance with the B-A-O-D regulations. We're looking to build multifamily housing, and under the B-A-O-D, we also need to follow the special permit requirements of the C-E-I-O-D, which requires a preliminary determination from this board to ensure that what I'm proposing is in compliance with your regulations. I know that most of you are very familiar with the site, but I'll give you a very brief overview. The site is located in the RM zoning district. We have approximately 31,212 square feet of area on the lot. The site is well-suited for multifamily development, even using the B-A-O-D, because it is zoned RM, which is, by definition in your bylaw, used for high-density housing. The proposal will allow for a six-unit development, which will all be standalone units. Colleen, may I go forward one slide? Thank you. As this board is aware, our previous development attempts had, did not have standalone units, and that was because the previous building inspector had found that multifamily housing was not defined as standalone units on a single lot. They had to be connected. But thanks to the initiatives of actually this board, at town meeting, there was a vote made to change the definition of multifamily housing, and now you can have standalone units defined as multifamily housing. And that would also pertain to this development and any developments in the RM zoning district. This change also allowed for the current developer and owner of the site to embrace that underlying zoning in the RM zoning district and leverage that with the tools that have been given to us in this B-A-O-D and C-E-I-O-D regulations to construct or propose this development that you see before you on the slide. In the conformance with the RM zoning district, we're proposing six units. As the board's aware, the density for RM zoning is 5,000 square feet per unit, so we are proposing six. That's a little different than the other proposals that have come before this board with, as we're not basing our density in the FAR. We're actually using the RM zoning to set our density. As the board is aware, we had two previous determinations on this development, which are still active. Colleen, may I flip forward one? One is for a nine-unit townhouse development, which is this development here. And the next one, which was the most current one, is for this 15-unit rental development. If you can go one more, Colleen. Ooh. This is why I'm bringing boards. This is my nice meeting. Take a TV timeout.
There we go.
One more. Can you go one more slide forward? Scroll. There we go. So this slide here, I think, is very beneficial. It shows the three projects side-by-side-by-side, so you can actually see what's been approved for preliminary determination on the first two projects, and then what we're proposing all the way over to the right-hand side. What this does is it creates a small family neighborhood, or what's being used as a term now, is a pocket neighborhood. This project also allows for 66% of the site to be retained as open space, which is more than any of these previous developments allowed for. It also creates starter homes for people that are looking to downsize, and it creates convenient access to the amenities and the businesses that are being created along the 129 overlay, which is one of the intents of the B-A-O-D overlay. Will you go one more slide, Colleen? Oh, one more, I'm sorry. That was a repeat. There we go. This slide is actually a table that compares the density and some other factors of the three developments side-by-side-by-side, of the nine townhouses, 15 apartments, and the six detached condos that we're proposing. As you can see, and as I already stated, this proposal that we have has the greatest amount of green space, it's 66%. It also has the lowest amount of building coverage and impervious. That's largely due to the fact that we don't need as much parking, and the 15-unit structure has a large parking area. We also were allowed, in this development, when we laid it back out with the six independent units, to keep the 30-foot setback in the rear, which was very important to the abutters. And that's actually the allowed setback in the RM zoning district, so we're not looking for any relief in the rear setback. I think that you will note, and if you've looked at this table, we have increased the building coverage. And this is because we are trying, and the board had asked us during previous developments, to try to keep these buildings to two stories. And that's what we've tried to do here. But in order to do that, we need an increased building coverage. We could actually comply with building coverage by building the larger townhouse styles that are taller and sticking the garage underneath, but I don't think that's what this board wanted. And I don't think that it has a benefit to the abutters, as these units will be shorter and less impactful to the neighbors. We do have some renderings, Colleen, if you want to just flip through quickly. I think they're the next six or so slides, if you want to just scroll on through. Now, these are some renderings that show the architectural design that we may use on the site. These are actually created for this development. And these are some prototypes of about 1,600 square feet in size. They all have a single-car garage, so that we don't need those bigger parking areas and why we need the increased coverage. They all have a farmer's porch, and all of these units will have a potential for first-floor living, which will allow for the downsizers to stay in place. And don't be concerned, I know these look like cookie cutter one after another after another, but obviously, there'd be, this is just a base-level unit, and there'd be different design components for all of the units. It wouldn't look exactly the same. I think, as I already previously stated, this development is in accordance with the underlying zoning district, so we are not asking for a density bonus of any sort on the site. We're actually going to comply with the underlying zoning. And as such, and I think I stated this in my cover letter as well, I would also seek a determination from this board that this project is not, is not subject to the inclusionary zoning bylaw. And I'll read out loud for you the pertinent section, and I actually saw a town council here. Here he is. So you won't have to rely on me that this is the actual section. But 195-137, which is the inclusionary zoning section, states that the planning board shall require that any development as applicable per 195-134, which is the section of the inclusionary zoning bylaw, for four or more dwelling units in a residential or mixed-use project shall be conditioned upon at least 25% prior to any consideration of density bonus per 195-138E, which is the special permit for a density bonus, of the units, subject to this bylaw, shall be restricted as affordable housing units. Also, I would like to point out to the board that the RM zoning district also has a bonus, which is if you create 10 units and one of them are affordable, you can actually ask for an increased bonus there. We don't follow under either, either of these sections. Okay? We are not seeking a density bonus, and we are not a large enough project under the RM to have 10 units, so we will not be seeking a density bonus under there. I know the board may be concerned as I'm saying this, is what is this set for precedent for this board if we waive inclusionary zoning? And I want to say two things about that. I don't think that you're waiving it, because I don't think we're subject to it. There's only three lots in the B-A-O-D that are RM-zoned. And I would argue if any of those projects came in with a residential multifamily project, even if they wanted to use the benefits of the B-A-O-D, and they were not asking for a density bonus, they should, also should not have to comply with the inclusionary zoning bylaw. It makes it prohibitive for them to actually build smaller projects, which is what the RM zoning allows on these smaller lots. In closing, but, Colleen, you go a couple forward. Let's see. A little slide here. Yeah, that one. So in closing, I think I have highlighted why this six-unit development is in conformance with the B-A-O-D. And I think it clearly meets the standards for a preliminary determination of applicability. It addresses many of the issues that this board and many of the abutters has raised on previous applications, as to height, as to density, as to type of units. I think that it's complementary and appropriate in density to some of the surrounding developments. I think it will add value to the neighborhood and the community and not detract from it. I think it also provides for necessary housing for first-time homebuyers and possible downsizers, and it's within the intent of the B-A-O-D to create housing with convenient access to amenities and fulfills the economic potential for this lot, which is actually one of the requirements of the B-A-O-D for an infill project such as this. I know I've given the board a lot of information and gone through 17 slides, pretty done quickly, so I'm happy to answer any questions I may have glossed over, any questions the board may have regarding this preliminary determination.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Who wants to go first? I mean, I'll go first if nobody else will.
Go ahead, Mike. My time.
All right. Well, in terms of B-A-O-D seoid applicability, it strikes me that it is, in fact, applicable. I want to get Evan's take on that, just to make, you know, see your perspective. But it is within the zone, or the area, the overlay. So, given that our activity tonight is just to determine applicability of B-A-O-D seoid, I think it's a pretty easy situation. If we want to give any potential guidance as to where we might want to see the project go, we can do that, but that's, at this point, strictly opinion. So, with that said, I'd be in favor. Anybody else?
I like the looks of it. I think, of all the ones that have gone through so far, this is probably the best fit for that lot.
Now, the, as I recall, the areas around it are all residential of one sort or another. I believe across the street is single, behind it is, a rather similar setup.
I'd be in favor of it.
Okay. Ed, you always have an opinion.
Oh, yeah, I do. I, this is the third iterate. This is the third iteration on this property for various reasons. I look at this, yeah, it may be on the seoid, but usually when we get into a seoid situation, we're all, we're kind of buying into the project. And I don't know if I buy into this project. Looking at the size of the driveways, I don't think you're going to be able to fit a second car in the driveway. You build the three-bedroom homes, it's probably going to be a two-car situation. I know you're giving us, Melissa, you're giving us the idea that this is a starter or a downsizer. It's a good idea, but I think you're also going to find, I think what, what this strikes me as is a, another, and I can't remember the name of the condo complex, but it sits on Richardson Road behind the synagogue.
Lamp lighter.
Lamp lighter green, thank you. This is another version of lamp lighter green with even smaller street. And that is basically a nightmare for traffic on Saturdays, Sundays, holidays, a lot of the time. So, those are my comments. And it's not anything you can address. It's just I got to make up my mind whether I support it or not, and I'll be honest, I don't support it. I've seen so many iterations on this, it's kind of like, for God's sakes, pick one and build it, you know? And be done with it. And, but I think this one, yeah, we got more green space, but I think we're building a, a traffic nightmare for whoever is going to be enthused about buying these. So, Mike, you asked me for my opinion?
And I got it.
And you got it.
Okay. Thanks, Ed.
I think it's by far the best one I've seen. I like the idea that they're on single units where you're not going to have a multi-tenant building. And I think with the driveway, if you put one car in the garage and one in the driveway, I don't think that would be an issue, but I'm just, I'm in favor. I'd like to discuss that.
Just comment on, I tried to measure the driveway.
Right.
I don't know that it's more than 15 feet long, so it's going to be a small car.
Good evening. Matt Hammer with Landplex Engineering. Those are 18 feet, those driveways on there.
Okay.
Done?
Yeah, I think actually, looking at the three post projects and the two that we've actually already approved for, for applicability, this is the best of the three, for sure. In many different ways, it does create that neighborhood that might not be there if it was a multifamily project. I, I like the idea of having single-family detached. I think it's consistent with, with everything that this board, and at least in my mind, everything that I believe was appropriate for the 129 area. So I'm definitely in favor of this project.
I have to agree with Dawn and Hank. I think, I'm very pleased with it. I think you listened to what we said and why you've made these changes because of our comments. I do agree with Ed with the driveways, but you cleared that up. So other than that, I think you did a great job, and the presentation's great, too. Thank you.
Between all three, I think it's probably the better one. The only comment I would have is if you could take and put maybe even an extra couple parking spots on the end of the road, or something that you could take and have some spot for people to park.
Yes, parking.
Because right now, people are going to park in the emergency spot, and I'd love to hear what the fire department has to say about it when they finally get to that point.
Yeah.
But as far as applicability, I think it's applicable.
Thanks. Nan?
I think, as everybody else has said, that this is by far the best of the three options. I think that the single-family, single-dwelling nature of it is more in fitting with that area. I am, however, concerned in looking at 195-134 applicability for inclusionary housing bylaw. I'm not seeing any reason that this doesn't apply to that bylaw.
Okay. Well, we can, we can address that.
We can certainly address that when, when we see an application, but, you know, just be aware that, from, from what I'm reading, this certainly applies and would require either an affordable unit or payment in lieu.
Okay. Well, we can.
But yes, I absolutely believe that it is applicable to a B-A-O-D in this area.
Okay. Well, when and if the issue comes before us, we can investigate that in some more detail. I think it's probably fairly straightforward to answer. It may be a little premature to answer it now.
Would you like a motion?
I would love a motion.
Give you a motion for positive finding of applicability for B-A-O-D.
Second. Okay, I have a motion. I have a second. Any final?
Discussion.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? One? Okay. You've got it. Hope to see it come back in with plans and, you know.
Yes.
Eight-by-ten color glosses with circles and arrows.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And if I may ask, since the question is going to be brought, and Nan has already raised it, and I've already raised it, I would ask, as we go along with the application, if we could get town council's opinion as to applicability as part of our special permit application process?
Okay. We can, we can certainly do that. And, and we can do it ahead of time, so we, so you know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I will. All right. Sunny Acres, 254, has asked for continuance.
It's a letter.
And there's a letter in there. We might want to read it.
Ed, is it from?
Right. Okay.
This is not a question. Do you, do you butters? Do you have any say in this at all?
Not at this point. This is.
At this point on, it's pretty much a done deal.
Well, I'm, this is an administrative review for applicability under B-A-O-D and seoid.
Though it's no voice.
Not at this point. When it comes to an actual, because we don't really know what's going to show up there. All we've done is say, yes.
Can you raise our concerns about how that fits in with the neighborhood?
Nope. I'm afraid not. But you will have a chance, you will have a chance when this comes in as an actual application, which it may not do. We just don't know. You know? You know? Colleen, what's the letter? Is it a letter or an email?
It's a big bucket tonight.
How to find a problem?
Well, I just said, is it an email or like a letter?
Oh, I didn't know.
I was asking.
From Brian Malisny. "Colleen, I would like to request a continuance until December 12th, planning board meeting for Sunny Acres Nursing and Rehabilitation Project at 254." Bill Ricker wrote. "Thank you for your consideration of this request." Brian Malisny.
Hmm?
It's a motion.
Yeah, well, one of the usual guys will make it.
Make a motion.
Second.
All right, that's moved and seconded for continuance. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Continued until the 12th.
Colleen, I'm leaving.
Okay. Let the record note. All right, next up is 24 Misty Meadows Road. And I think you're all familiar with this.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Katie Unright with Howard Stein Hudson. Sorry, I was trying to find my voice. Here on behalf of the subdivision proposed at 24 Misty Meadows Road under the planned open-space development bylaw. Two weeks ago, we were here with a draft decision, and there was a couple more questions brought to light. So since then, I believe I had supplied you at the meeting with an email from the Assistant DPW Director regarding the extension of Bridal Road. Since then, the board has also been sent the acceptance plan for Bridal Road, and Mr. Haverty has also prepared, as your town council, a legal opinion as to the extension of Bridal Road. That is, is really where we stand at this point. Certainly, I'm here to answer any additional questions that might have transpired over the last couple of weeks. And Mr. Haverty is also here to, I imagine, to discuss his letter, if need be.
Okay. Pretty good. Thank you.
Oh, I forgot one thing. The purchase and sale agreement had been submitted about three or four weeks ago, too, at Ed's request, so.
Thank you.
We had had that prior to the last meeting also.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, this is a continued public hearing. I think, well, we'll take, we'll take comments from the floor in a minute, but are there any, anybody on the board have additional questions concerning what Katie has said that we need to, should address up front? I think we're in good shape.
I saw the plan on it, and that is, that is the actual plan that was submitted to the planning board and the selectmen and.
It is what it is. Yeah, I got it right here.
Wow.
Boy, old-time Mylar, too. It's been, it's been in the basement for a while. Okay. This is a public hearing, and I would like anybody who would like to give public input on 24 Misty Meadow Road to come on up. Please identify yourself and.
Carol Kivlin-Coens, 34 Abbott Lane. My husband's going to speak for me. I'm just going to hand out.
Okay, sure.
Good evening. My name is Todd Coens, 34 Abbott Lane. My wife and I are butters to the Misty Meadow Road property. In prior meetings, town meetings, planning board meetings, and conservation commission meetings, the Bridal Road residents have had ample opportunity to voice their concerns regarding this development.
Wow.
And while the Bridal Road residents are the most directly impacted by the construction of new homes in the Misty Meadow Road property, they are not the only ones impacted by this development, planned open-space development. There are 64 abutting properties to Misty Meadow, and of that, only three are on Bridal. The petition submitted to you tonight has 65 signatures, 20 of which are from abutting properties, that voiced strong support for the planned open-space development specifically because it preserves 26-plus acres of wildlife habitat in perpetuity. The, you know, this represents the voice of the other area residents, and, and we faced a strong, unanimous support for this open-space development. There wasn't a single person that voiced opposition to it, again, specifically because of the preservation of, of so much wild habitat. While the impact of construction on Bridal Road residence is significant, it will be finite, and if this plan is approved as submitted to the board, the open space will be preserved in perpetuity, so forever. And this is, this is clearly of benefit to all the butters of this area, area residents and to the town of Chelmsford as a whole. And, you know, I, I would say that it's, it's rare that the planning board has an opportunity to make a decision that can have such a positive impact and enduring impact on our community. And if, if this is not approved, the downsides are that it's likely that there'll be a less attractive proposal will come forward in the future on this property. So I would urge the board to seize the moment, vote to approve this plan, and conclude by saying that the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to have a word? Hi, Bill.
Hello. William Harvey, resident of 71 North Road, Chelmsford. Just had a quick question. I tried to have an opportunity to look at this plan, but wasn't too sure how it worked. Will the traffic, will the entrance to the subdivision be going directly through Bridal and also exiting Bridal, or is it Misty Meadows?
I believe it's Bridal.
Okay, Bridal. And do you have a copy of the acceptance plan? Is that on the screen? I didn't have an opportunity to look at that.
I have it.
No, we can put it up on the screen.
I don't know if we have a computer.
I saw a small one.
Go ahead.
I just have to unplug Katie.
Good.
All right.
Here, show them that one while I'm doing it.
Hi. Have you, have you seen this one, Bill?
I, I've seen a plan, but I'd like to see whether or not that's.
I believe this is the acceptance plan.
It's the original.
Yeah. You can lay it out here if you like, it's easier.
This is the plan that I reviewed.
Okay, good.
So, the question I had about the plan, which I found highly unusual, was that usually a subdivision plan, and Mr. Rees-Bach, you'd know this, it, when it gets approved, it gets recorded at the Registry of Deeds, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So that the whole world knows exactly what the plan is about.
Exactly.
Okay. Well, that was what was concerning to me, is that there's no marking by the Registry of Deeds. There's no book and page, there's no stamp, there's no signatures by the planning board members. So I don't see how this is accepted by the town.
Do we know what's recorded?
Yes, I can put that up on the computer also.
Okay.
This is accepted, and that's been recorded.
Okay.
Well, is this, the question's very simple, is whether or not this is the actual acceptance plan. That's all, that's the question I have, because I look at it, and I don't see a recorded book and page. And I don't see the board of, the planning board members back then signing off, as they usually do. And it's been represented to you, unless I heard wrong, that this is the plan that was signed off by the town. This is the acceptance plan, unless I heard wrong.
That's my understanding, yep.
Okay. I'll give this back to you.
Thanks.
So I don't like to rain on anybody's parade, because I really have no interest in this land. But what I do have an interest in is that each and every developer should be treated equally and fairly before the boards. Okay? Thanks. So I don't like to rain on anybody's parade because I really have no interest in this land. But what I do have an interest in is that each and every developer should be treated equally and fairly before the boards. Okay? Nobody should be favored over anybody else. So I have one question for the town engineer. Did you submit a letter to this board?
For.
For your opinion? For your opinion? Just like you did with mine. Did you submit a plan or a letter to this board relative to this project?
I believe Stephen Yanley did in the beginning of the project.
Well, what's your opinion about this plan?
He also submitted a letter by you reviewing it. I mean, I reviewed the plan, and Steve Yanley in the very beginning of the process sent a letter to Mr. Haverty, Attorney Haverty, asking whether it was appropriate for the subdivision to take place. And there was no opposition.
There was no opposition by Mr. Yanley?
Or Mr. Haverty.
Well, what about you?
No, if they both agree on that, then why would I have a problem? That's an accepted road.
Listen, I'm not going to get into it, but you're the town engineer. You have a legal obligation to the town. You have an obligation to me as a taxpayer, okay, to look into these plans and figure out whether or not they're done properly. Not just rely on somebody else's opinion, okay? But we all know, we all have an ethical obligation, just as I do. I have an ethical obligation as an attorney. When I present documents to this board, they have to be documents that are authenticated. And if there are other documents out there that I know about that I don't want the board to see just so I can get my project approved, I get in a lot of trouble. And engineers get in a lot of trouble. Surveyors get in a lot of trouble. And that's your job.
Mr. Harvey, I appreciate you being here this evening. But your interaction here is not appropriate.
It is appropriate.
No, it's not appropriate to treat a town engineer like that.
Mr. Chairman.
One second.
Don't interrupt me.
Mr. Harvey, one second, please.
May I submit this plan?
You may submit whatever you've got.
Thank you. Now, this is the real plan that was at the registry. Because when I received the so-called plan there, I said to myself, "Why isn't it recorded?" So may I submit the real plan?
May I have a look?
I will first give it to Mr. Donald Van Dye. And I'll give you another one. And this shows a plan that's signed by the planning board. Page, and it's planned.
Okay? It's two pages. It's signed by the planning board, and it's recorded at the registry.
That's fine, yeah.
And if you see the highlighted section at the end, you'll see that there's...
Yeah.
There's an easement at the end of Bridal. It's called a drainage easement. Mr. Chairman, may I approach again?
You may.
And what we have, what I'm going to provide you is another document that was recorded at the registry of deeds. And you'll see on the side of that plan, it says, "Refer to the protective covenants." I'm going to show you a copy of the protective covenants. There it is. There it is, right there.
Thank you.
Now, the protective covenants directly state, they're highlighted, it covers lots... It's a restrictive and protective covenant for the benefit of lots 24 through 27.
244 for 2, 277.
Exactly. Now, number eight Bridal, which is the last lot on the right-hand side, that's lot 257.
Right.
Now, if you turn to page two, it says easements. "Easements for the installation, maintenance of utilities, drainage facilities are reserved as shown on the recorded plan in over the rear five feet of each lot. Within these easements, no structure, plantings, or other materials shall be placed or permitted to remain, which may damage or interfere with the installation or maintenance of utilities, or which may change the direction of flow of drainage channels in the easement." As you see on the plan, obviously, it's an easement. It's a drainage easement. This protective covenant specifically states that it can't be changed, it can't be altered, and therefore, you can't run a road through a drainage easement that's on the plan that's recorded at the registry of deeds. And there's a registered protective covenant. Furthermore, I went so far as to go and pull the deed for eight Bridal Road, which is lot 257 on that plan. Second page of that deed specifically refers to the drainage easement as an attorney would do on a title exam. "This conveyance is also subject to a drainage easement, as shown on the said plan as 20-feet drainage easement." Specifically states it on the plan. So I wanted you to have the full story tonight. Okay?
Well, thank you. I would observe that it's interesting to have this material. I will observe that the easement specifies that what might be there would not interfere with the drainage. And it's not clear to me that that's indeed the case. But we will review it and decide if we need to take further action based on it. Thank you for bringing this to us.
And I'd suggest you take further action on the plan that was submitted. I just don't think that was correct. It wasn't appropriate and completely unethical. Thank you.
Well, I won't comment to how it got to us or what the ethics involved are, but fortunately, we have town council with us. Is this something you need some time to review?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Paul Haverty, Blatman, Vabrowski, and Haverty, Town Council. I would need a few minutes to sit down and take a look at what the impact of this is. I do tend to lean towards you and the fact that if it says you're not allowed to interfere with this, if the design does not interfere with it, I'm not sure there's any violation, but I'd need to take a look at that. The plan that was submitted and that I had received says, "Plan of Bridal Road in Chelmsford, Massachusetts, as ordered by the town selectmen." My understanding is that this is the plan that was approved by town meeting when this roadway was approved as a public way.
Certainly, that annotation would indicate that.
Right. So I'm not sure why the subdivision plan would be more relevant than this plan when the question that was asked was, "Has this road been accepted as a public way all the way to the property line?" This plan is the definitive plan that answers that question.
Yes.
So I would disagree that there's any issue of ethical concern with regards to the submittal of this plan into the record. Happy to answer any other questions. I did take a look at the other subdivision plan, and it seems to be pretty consistent in that there's a roadway laid out that goes up to the property line, shows a temporary cul-de-sac. I don't see any material difference between the two. This plan does show a 20-foot drainage easement on the acceptance plan as well. I'm not sure, excuse me, if it differs from the subdivision plan that was approved. I'd have to take a look at that. But I'm not seeing anything that really changes anything materially. But again, I obviously just got it and had about 15 seconds to look at it.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. That lines up with my assessment of it. And certainly, the information that was on record is not inconsistent with the roadway ending right at the property line. Matter of fact, it supports that. So I think insofar as that question is concerned, I think we've got it resolved.
I just want to speak to the drainage aspect as far as the practical nature is what appears on the ground and what's happening in those easements. So essentially, the easements that are located at the end of Bridal adjacent to the stone wall are where there's a pipe that picks up water from lot eight or eight Bridal Road. Goes through the two catch basins at the end of Bridal Road. It goes down the side property line of the gentleman across the street from eight. Goes to a manhole cover, which then shoots onto our property, which is where the drainage easement starts, which is essentially where we've straddled this intermittent stream with the 14-foot culvert that we're proposing, which is the drainage path that leaves from that gentleman's outfall that captures all the Bridal drainage and goes under our road as to not impede the flow. So the trickle that's out there today, essentially the storm drainage, is now going under a 14-foot-wide concrete culvert.
So I can sum up what you said. It sounds as if putting a road in there according to the plans that you've presented is not in the least bit inconsistent with the existence of that drainage easement. Okay. Well, what it looks like to me, I would ask town council to give it a look, you know, in the daylight when he's got a chance to sit at his desk. But I think, I see no reason why that should impede us moving forward.
Can we just see clarification from council?
Yes.
Needs just additional time this evening? Or does he...
Yeah, it's whatever...
Because if he needs additional time this evening, we can just table it, go to the...
That's true. Paul, is there something you can...
I can look into it right now.
Okay, good. Then why don't we do that? Why don't we continue with the hearing?
Before you do that...
Yes.
The one question that I would have is that this, you know, this is a list of restrictive covenants that have been placed on this particular subdivision. They're dated back to 1966. So general laws, chapter 184, section 32, limits the length of time in which you can put a restrictive covenant on to 30 years. It does provide for the potential to extend that. I have no idea. I've not had an opportunity to look at the title to see if that has been done. But it may be that these restrictive covenants aren't even applicable anymore.
Yeah, that struck me as well. Ed?
Can I ask him a question?
Sure. To who?
To Paul.
No, please do.
So if I had a drainage easement, when I bought a property... Let me just make sure I understand. You quoted the law real quick. Let me give an example. If I bought a piece of property 40 years ago, and I had to give the town a drainage easement across the back of my property, and I bought it 40 years ago, does that mean that that drainage easement is now null and void?
If it is in fact an easement, then no. Easements are in perpetuity. Restrictive covenants are limited to 30 years. This document is a little hazy on whether or not they are... I mean, it's entitled restrictive covenant, but then it uses the term easement. So I would have to take a look at that in more depth.
Okay, so an easement is in perpetuity.
If it is in fact an easement.
But a restrictive covenant is 30 years.
30 years with the potential for renewal.
Okay, boy, I'm learning law.
It's quite likely that, you know, the use of the term easement is probably more than sufficient to qualify this as an easement, even with the confusion with regard to the heading of restrictive covenants. But I just wanted to make that point. Again, I just saw this, so I haven't had a chance to look at it.
Yeah, Nan?
Within these protective covenants, there is a clause of terms that says that they're applicable for 30 years from the date that they're recorded, after which time said covenants shall be automatically extended for successive periods of 10 years, unless the instrument's signed by a majority of the owners, et cetera, et cetera. Is that legitimate to have a self-extension?
It's not. I would have to take a look at when the statute was put in place. It may have been that the statute went into place after these covenants were adopted. But it does require affirmative action by the property owners to extend restrictive covenants.
Great. Thanks a lot, Paul.
How come this wasn't seen like the first time? How come they put it up?
It's a fairly complex title.
Carol Comans, 34 Abbott Lane. First off, I want to thank Mr. Harvey for bringing this to our attention. Living on Abbott Lane, of course, there's an easement on both sides of my property. So this is very interesting to hear about these things. However, I've been following this since, I believe, it's September. And so if I says it was a ballgame, I'd say we're at the top of the ninth. And my question is, why now? Like, why now is this being brought up? I've sat here week after week, and Mr. Harvey's been here, and this is the first I've heard. So my question is, what is the intent? Is it to be a concerned citizen and that we all be treated equally? That's great. But the point is, where have you been? I mean, so, again, speaking for the 65 neighbors that I spent my weekend with discussing this, again, we really hope you consider going forward with this. It is for the betterment of the town and the rest of the citizens. And thank you very much.
Hey, yeah, go ahead, Paul.
The question is, where have I been? This was provided at the last meeting.
Yeah, exactly.
So this is when I got it. I got it at the last meeting. I didn't get it a month ago. So this has been going on for a long time. This should have been brought to your attention. It wasn't. And relative to the term of years, it specifically states it's for 30 years. It renews every 10 years unless the majority of the homeowners decide to sign off on it. That wasn't done. Okay? And, you know, we've had legal counsel give you an opinion before. And we've had an opinion with him regarding 91 Bill Ricker Road when I did an A&R plan. He wrote a nice lengthy legal memorandum, billed the town for that, and it was completely wrong. You all voted against it. You voted for my plan, and you totally ignored his legal memorandum. So maybe you should go back to the office and take a further look at this rather than you jumping on this and deciding to decide with him. I appreciate it.
I think we... Go ahead, Paul.
Mr. Chairman, just to respond quickly. If you may recall, during that A&R session, you followed the exact advice that I gave you.
Yes.
And that advice was to endorse the plan and to put a specific endorsement on it. And that was consistent with law, and that's why you followed that. Thank you.
I need to respond to this.
Alright. Oh, come on, Bill. I went to this. You need to know what the whole story is, okay?
It's not a...
He needs to... No, I understand that. But he just stated that he's making some legal memorandum to you to accept it. He learned that from my text messages when I was sitting at, laying on the beach at South Beach Miami, trying to correct him, telling him what the law was, Smalley versus the Town of Howard. You didn't know that. Then I had to tell him to go to the A&R handbook, the four things that you could put on a plan. He didn't know that. Then he changes his mind. Then he got it right.
That's funny.
We'll see if he gets something else right.
That's quite enough. Okay, I will tell you what my decision is on what we're going to do here. I will get to you in a minute. This, if you wish to look into it farther, please do. I am reasonably convinced that whatever the case is here, that the existence of that easement has very little to do with the road going in. If you wish to pursue it, you have the usual mechanisms that you can use, and I know you're well aware of them. But at this point, I'm going to continue the hearing and get additional input, and then we will decide whether we want to move forward and how. So with that said, do I have anybody else who would like to get up and speak? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Laura Cormier, eight Bridal Road. For what it's worth, on my plot plan, it does say that that's a drainage easement. But I just want to say, because I know that it came up, that 65 residents are in favor of this. And on behalf of the Bridal Road residents, we never expressed opposition to the plan. And if you look back at everything we've written, we have said that we're in full support of the preservation of the property. Obviously, the impact on us is that there's going to be a lot directly adjacent to my home, which for the last, you know, since 1966, has been a thickly wooded area. home, which for the last, you know, since 1966, has been a thickly wooded area. If you were going to leave that a thickly wooded area, and that was going to be the preservation land, then that would, might be different, you know, in how we approach the board. What we were asking all along was how the development is going to be done so that we can protect the value of our properties. So in part of that, we asked for, you know, some protection with trees. We understand that the plan is within the zoning laws and that those have been followed, the distances from the property lines have been followed, and we had all their information when we made our request. Our requests are based on just preserving the value and, you know, as much privacy as we properly can and have had with the current look and feel that has been there.
Thanks. Yeah, and I, I do want to recognize that that's, that's reasonably well represents the position of a lot of people over on Bridle. Okay, anybody else? Yeah, please step on up.
Mary Jefferson, 5 Bridle. I just wanted to remind you folks that we have brought up several issues, of which Laura just mentioned one of them. I think the biggest one right now that's still outstanding is the vast amount of truck traffic. We're talking about 700 large dump trucks of material, fill material, and construction material.
Mm-hmm.
Don't want to stop the project, but it would really be appreciated if you folks could somehow put a limit, either, the timeline is unlimited right now, as I, as I understand it from previous meetings, that we can't confine it to a two-year period of development, that there is not to be, it's unlikely that Misty Meadow Road can support any of the traffic for construction. So that puts the whole burden on, on Bridle Road. And it would be really nice if a few of us didn't have to take a heavy hit for, for the town on this. So consider that if you can.
Thank you.
Be appreciated.
Yeah, and let me say, your, your point is a good one, and it's one that's understood. The arrangement of the, the roads and the land here, and the fact that Misty Meadow really isn't going to support anything bigger than a pickup truck.
Yep.
Is, is unfortunate, but that's the case. I doubt there's a good way to put a overall time limit in terms of years on the project. There might conceivably be things that could be done to control what happens on particular days, like, you know, starting and ending times or such as that. But I think that's about as far as we could really reasonably go here. But we'll, we'll discuss it as a board.
Okay.
The current decision.
Yeah.
In all, all subdivisions have a, have a 24-month to execute.
Right.
Normally, that 24 months starts the date of approval. In this particular case, special condition number seven mentions a 24-month from the date of commencement of initial land disturbance.
Right.
So when they first go in. And within that first 24 months, all land clearing, tree removal, roadway, and infrastructure is to be completed.
Okay.
So the only thing that does not contemplate is actual building of houses on lots.
Right.
As well as bringing in fill for each particular lot.
Okay, that, that offers some degree, and that's pretty good. Would there, I just want to make sure that because of the nature of this project and the fact there are multiple lots, it is conceivable that we could get into a situation where we didn't quite make it. Is that something that's open to review by the planning board should a, should a problem come up? I mean, could we, could we give relief at that at the other end of?
We can back and ask for an extension.
Normally, normally for any subdivision you approve, you're not, you're not, you're not regulating the timing of the lots being built.
Right. That, well, we can do very little with that.
Right. That's what this condition is doing.
Right. Okay. Then I think that's fair enough. I'll ask Katie about that in a minute, see what, see what she thinks. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else wish to have a word? Katie, just, do you have any thoughts on the, on the condition that he's discussed? I mean, is this?
Right, we had asked, Evan had stated that the two-year for the roadway is a standard condition, so we could certainly, if something happened with the roadway, we could certainly come back and ask for an extension. The lots themselves, if those have been taken out of the two-year, then that's fine with us.
Okay. Good. Okay, I think, as good a compromise as we're going to get. As is often the case with the planning. Anybody else care to say anything? Okay, I'm not going to close the public hearing just yet, but let me pass it around to board. Does anybody want to make a comment or bring up any additional questions? Who wants to start?
Well, I, I would. I have a question for Katie. So with him bringing up this new plan tonight, is this the plan that you guys have been looking at the whole time? So, for example, you knew there was an easement, that you already have a plan to deal with that easement.
Correct.
So that's already in place?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I just wanted to know.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Well, I'm going to ask then, let me, let me poll the board, and Evan, is there any reason why we should not close the public hearing at this point and continue on to looking at the, the draft?
So I stepped out.
Yeah.
Are we not, are we not waiting on council sometime during tonight's meeting?
Well, we'll give him one more shot to say his thing.
Again, Mr. Chairman, the, the real issue here is whether or not the development is going to impact that easement, and whether or not it's going to actually deprive the people who have the rights in that easement of the full enjoyment of it. So my suggestion would be that any decision include a condition that requires that the easement not be blocked or hampered in any way.
Excellent. Okay, I think that's reasonable. Can you get that in, Evan? I, I think that, that covers the case. Last chance for public input. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Thanks, Don.
Second.
Got a second? Uh, yeah, you can second. Well, let, let him second. I'm not sure what the status is. All right, I have motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Public hearing is closed on this. Now, we have before us, if I read in my pile of paper, a draft certificate of approval for special permits and for certificate of approval definitive subdivision. Any comments you want to put onto it?
It's the same as, same as the decision you saw last time, with the exception that it is now a full-voting member. He mullined, he mullioned in.
He mullined in, okay.
Yeah. I added procedural history number nine, reflecting council's letter of today's Number eight, after residence response dated September 12th, we should also add the neighborhood petition and support that was submitted this evening. And then the, the new condition, which would be special condition number nine, this is on the definitive subdivision approval.
Yep.
Something to the effect, existing drainage easement at the end of Bridle shall not be restricted, impacted. Not sure what the, what the specific word should be.
Shall be supported.
Okay, well, we can, we can wordsmith that, I think. Make it appropriate.
So the, the definitive subdivision draft is fairly straightforward. The special permit one contains a lot of the language and special conditions that pertain to the cluster open space subdivision per zoning, referencing the legal documents that need to be submitted, and when they need to be submitted, and who they need to be reviewed and approved by, and also talks specifically about the, the conveyance of the 26 acres open space. At the last November 20th Conservation Commission meeting I attended, they specifically took two votes. One to vote to accept if and when donated the 26 acres specifically for wildlife preservation. And then the second vote that they took was that they did not want to have the right-of-way, Misty Meadow right-of-way, or any of the culverts or drainage conveyed to them. That would, that would remain within the ownership of the homeowners association.
Okay.
So that's, that's qualified in the special permit decision as well.
So that's where we stand. I have a certain bear who likes to make visits to my beehives, and I'm looking at this space. Maybe he'd like to live over there. Okay. Has everybody had a chance to go through this? I don't want to, I don't want to rush it.
As you're looking in there, under the special conditions, there's a payment in lieu for sidewalks not being constructed, the, the number.
Okay.
For that, contributions in there. There's also the special condition that reflects the town engineer's recommendation that each lot shall have a grading and drainage plan prior to building permit being issued. It references that the, all the conditions within the definitive and vice versa, special permit are applicable to each decision. Special condition number nine talks about prior to any land disturbance, that a construction phasing, schedule, and staging plan shall be submitted. This should include pre-construction meeting and inspections of town staff, installation of erosion and sediment control, and limited work, demarcations, and locations of equipment and material storage staging areas. So some of those are in reference to some of the butter concerns, looking for some predictability.
Right.
Understanding kind of the rules of engagement while this is an active construction site.
Good. I appreciate that being included. Okay, and the rest of this is pretty much standard boilerplate.
Right.
Anybody on the board wishes to have a last say, go ahead and say it, otherwise I would, well, we're going to have a couple of motions here. I think this is more than one motion.
Two separate motions, two separate decisions.
Yes.
Yeah, well.
Okay.
Position has changed since the last meeting.
Okay. Understood. Well, we have in front of us first a certificate of approval special permit. Does anybody want to bring forward a motion?
I move that we approve Planning Board filed 2018-10, special permit for 24 Misty Meadow Road.
Have a motion? Have a second?
A second.
I have a second from Don. Final commentary? In favor?
Aye.
Aye and opposed? Two. One, two, three, four. Does that come out? And I'm from, one, two, three, four.
Two.
Five, two. Okay. It makes it five, two. And the second piece we have here is a certificate of approval definitive subdivision plan.
Just to clarify here.
Yep.
The voting requirements, the alternate, I don't believe can qualify for a vote on the definitive. I don't believe the alternate can qualify.
That's right.
Okay.
So my understanding of the, of the voting requirements is it's the majority, a simple majority of the, of the, of the board.
Okay.
So that's.
All right, understood.
Maybe four.
Four out of seven. Okay.
So I move that we, Planning Board filed 2018-10, definitive subdivision plan for 24 Misty Meadow Road.
You have a motion? Second. I have a second over here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We have it 42.
I have a question.
Yes.
Can the alternate member, since town council is here, he can tell me very quickly, can the alternate member vote, jump in and vote as a planning board member? Okay, I answered.
The special permits.
Henry's not here, so he can jump in.
Right.
Okay. Answered my own question.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Give this guy a law degree. There are enough of them in the room. Okay, so we have.
Congratulations are in order.
Huh?
I say congratulations are in order.
I think congratulations are in order. This has been difficult, but, but I think we got to the right place. Want to take a break before we last forward? Anybody?
Yeah, why don't we?
All right, let's take.
Relieve the tension.
Yeah, let's take a short break. Five minutes.
Don't, don't let that happen.
Look. God, I remember he took me apart. I got torn apart once by Judge Young. No, no, he was right.
Evan.
Uh, we all back with it?
In a residential area.
Okay, um...
If you change anything else without going through the Planning Board?
Let's see.
No, I mean, could they do anything besides a church there? If they, if they wanted to do something besides a church? If somebody else bought it and wanted to do something else?
Yeah, yeah, I could do it. It's available.
Another exempt use?
Other exempt use, yeah. But it would have to be an exempt. But they have to come before the Planning Board to change the use.
Thanks, thanks. Okay, we're back in session. The next up is twenty-one to twenty-five Quigley Ave, De Chere and Tantrum Temple, Inc.
Um, good evening, everyone. Katie Unright with Howard Stein Hudson, um, here on behalf of the temple, um, with some members of the temple joining us tonight, um, at the Planning Board. Um, we left the Planning Board, um, a meeting ago or two weeks ago with, with three directives. Um, one, we did not have a letter yet from your town engineer, Christina Papadopoulos, which should be in the file. Um, two, um, there was a question about tents on the property and outside events, um, and I have some additional information to share with you on that. And then three was potentially finding a second parking agreement, um, for the larger scale events on the subject site. So we do have a, a letter from Christina in the file. Um, secondly, when there is, um, a few things that take place outside, none of the tents will be located within the parking spaces or within the, or disruptive of the aisles. Typically, they're shade tents that are put outside really close to the buildings and retaining walls. There is one holiday where, um, there's a parade around, um, the area, um, but it's not an outside event per se. Um, there are people outside of the building and then they go inside to have the ceremony thereafter. Um, and thirdly, the parking agreement, the, the, um, the temple did, was able to meet with St. John's last week, um, and we've had some communications, um, back and forth with them. Um, we do not have a letter from them yet. We're not sure if we're going to get a letter from them yet. Um, we are gonna continue to work. Obviously, we had Thanksgiving and there was a, a large holiday weekend, so we're gonna continue to work with them and others in the area, um, to find an additional parking agreement, um, for those three events that we have every year. Right now, we do have one in place and in the file with Dolan Funeral Home, which has ample amount of spaces over there. Um, and we do have, uh, parking directives. We met, we had a, a meeting at the temple with Lieutenant Colin Spence regarding the parking requirements for the area. Um, those were translated, um, and they're given out to the members of the, of the temple for future parking within the streets, um, around Quigley for those three large events. Um, so we will continue to work with the area to find a secondary parking agreement. We don't, do not have one to show you tonight. We'd certainly feel fine with either trying again over the next two weeks or having it be a condition of approval that a second parking agreement be in place or a letter be placed in the file, um, as a condition of approval also. So I'd like to have that potential discussion with the board and answer any additional questions.
All right. Anybody, uh... You got some letters?
Yeah.
Sock it to us.
Uh, dear members, this office has reviewed the site plans by Howard Stein Hudson Associates, consistent of seven sheets dated October ten, two thousand and eighteen, and a supplemental data report dated October two thousand and eighteen. As a result of this review, this office has the following comments. One, this department shall be notified when work on-site is to commence in order to arrange for inspections. Two, any revisions to the drainage system shall be submitted and approved by this office. Three, the stormwater operation and maintenance plan shall be followed as described in the report. Copies of any inspections or other reports done in accordance with the plan shall be forwarded to engineering office. Four, a site as built shall be provided upon completion of the work on-site. As-built to include a letter from the engineer stating that all stormwater devices have been built to satisfy mass stormwater standards, providing all supporting documents. The as-built shall be from a ground survey and submitted in AutoCAD and paper form. Five, confirmatory testing shall be performed in areas of infiltration per stormwater management guidelines. Testing shall be witnessed by the Chumsford DPW Engineering Division. All unsuitable material, if any, discovered in the excavation for the infiltration drywells shall be removed and disposed of in accordance with state and local regulations. Six, the proposed sewer work will require permitting and applicable fees from the DPW Sewer Division for connection to municipal sewer system. Number seven, a road opening permit is required from the Chumsford DPW Highway Division for the work within the Quigley Ave right away. Eight, trench permits shall be filed as necessary per five-twenty CMR fourteen, Chapter eighty-two A. And number nine, the design engineer is in the process of completing design and drafting revisions to the plans according to the recommendations of this office. If you have any questions, please contact this office. Christina Papadopoulos. This is just Ed's, um, line in. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any, uh, anybody on the board care to put any questions out? I'm gonna be, uh, obviously opening this up. This is, I believe this is a continued public hearing, so it'll get to the public in a minute, but, uh... Guys? I think we got most of it last time? I think we did. Um, okay, I'm gonna open this up, unless you have any more you want to say, Katie. All right. Anybody from the public care to make a comment here? Want to give you the opportunity. Okay. I seeing, uh, seeing nobody from the public, um, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
Second. Oh, I'm sorry, what was that?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to voice a concern about this. I don't have a question.
Okay.
But I do have a concern. And... I'm not concerned about the parking versus the floor, floor space for the use that's being submitted. But I'm very concerned about the on-site parking if that use were to change any time in the future. And I would like to see a condition placed on this that any change of use requires resubmital to the Planning Board for approval.
So if I may?
Because of that parking situation.
When you asked me the, the change of use in between, uh, hearings.
Yeah.
My response was that if this changed from one exempt use to another exempt use, that in and of itself would not require, um, review and approval by the Planning Board. However, the items that you are approving, uh, such as, um, open space, parking, building coverage, if those changed substantially based upon a different exempt use, that, that would trigger a coming back.
That's my concern, is that if, if at any time in the future this property is, is desired, converted to any other use, that it has to come back to the Planning Board for review of, uh, park, at least parking and other suitability for that use. Because it's, you know, there's just not enough on-site parking here for, to do anything else with those buildings.
Okay.
Would that be amenable?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Well, as, as I understood what you said, Evan, I mean, if it, if it were to change from an exempt to a non-exempt use, that would trigger a revisit?
Um, I'm not sure that this property could be used for a non-exempt.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure either.
But an example would be, um, if it changed to an educational use and the functions inside the structures required an increased parking demand for our zoning buyout. I recall, I think, aren't you asking for some reduced on-site parking for this?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So that may, that may be a reasonable condition that Nan's referring to.
Okay.
Is that, you don't want that special permit to extend.
I don't want this special permit to, to extend to using this new building as an educational, as a classroom facility.
Okay. Well, if you can write that in, I think that makes eminent good sense.
And I'll bring this decision back to you.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, anybody else on the board?
Uh, just a comment based on some of the discussion I heard. I'd be careful on how you write "educational use," because if I heard them correctly, they're planning to use this as an educational facility. So...
That's, that's right.
Evan's got a weird sense of this thing.
Just any change in use requires resubmital.
I think if we put the word "religious education" versus something else.
Not, not really.
Yeah. You can words...
I'll figure that out.
Okay. I think that's good.
Yeah.
Definitely want to have the thing for the police, what the police chief asked for, which is an agreement in hand.
For the second one.
For the second one, yeah.
I'll, I'll put that as a condition. We'll figure out the timeline on that as well.
All right.
Do we have the details in there too? Police details?
I will, I will include that.
You will include that.
Good. Okay, well, now, well, we were in the process of closing the public hearing, but we never quite got to vote.
No, if you'd like.
Uh, but let me give people one more chance. Anybody? Oh, we do have somebody.
One question.
Okay, sure.
Donna Conlon, fourteen John Street.
Yeah.
They've talked about the parking, that they're gonna use Dolan's and hopefully St. John's Church. Is there a way to put signs up or to block? I live off of Highland Ave and there's, it's narrow, and if you're parking on two sides, you cannot get up the road.
Right, I understand a lot of the roads up there now.
It's hot enough when you think of soccer, how much trouble we as residents have getting in and out of our own homes. Is there a way, something can be written in that there'll be signs posted that only neighbors or only people who live there can park on this street? I don't know if that can be written in. I don't know if that can be.
Well, certainly, does, does the current parking regulations, uh, allow parking only on one side of that street anyway? Yeah, okay.
I'm not sure because the people park everywhere.
Yeah, I know.
So we had, we had a letter, um, from Lieutenant Spence, and we also had Lieutenant Spence come to the temple and meet with probably about ten or fifteen of us with the town of Chumsford's parking laws, um, and we walked through all of them. So there is public parking allowed on the road. There's no signs that say not, but you have to leave the, a space eighteen feet wide for emergency vehicles to get through. You have to be a certain distance from the end of somebody's driveway. You have to be a certain distance from an intersection. And all of these regulations were translated and, and are basically being passed out to their members. Um, and Colin has agreed to work with us.
Okay.
Um, he's basically said he's had some, some phone calls and it's immediately taken care of, but the temple wasn't aware of the specific laws regarding parking, and so now they've been made aware, aware of that and can make their people aware of that and, um, continue to police it.
Good, thanks. Yeah, well, it'll, it'll keep the, it'll keep the police a little bit busy on major...
To protect the residents, why can't they just install resident parking only?
Well, that's, that's a decision that they would have to make. I don't think that's a decision we can make.
Oh, Board of Selectmen doesn't, does that?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and you could certainly go to the Board of Selectmen and request that they do.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't have any resident-only parking anywhere.
Right, and...
Well, we could.
I've always cursed it when I was looking for a parking space.
It's a perfect example, though. You have neighbors.
Yeah, certainly parking on one side may be a good start, but yeah, that's, sounds like the police department's gonna be heavily involved.
Yeah, this is, I don't think this is within our purview.
Right. And I think, as, as Ed mentioned, the Planning Board decision's gonna say the three major annual events.
Yeah, we'll have details.
Well, it is something that we're, we're talking about because we're giving them, uh...
Yeah, but we can't, but we can't enact it.
No, but we could also come up with solutions to it, I think.
And I think, yeah, that's, that's a start.
Try to close the hearing?
Yeah, I'm gonna try to close the hearing now, but I'm gonna give one more chance. I'm sorry.
Quick more question for you. I, I think there should be a special permit on this as well for multiple structures. I know you usually put in that, in any other relief needed.
That's a, that's a good point. So as an exempt use, um, by law, we're not required to, we're not allowed to require special permits? So it's site plan and then waivers.
Yeah.
So, uh, if the board deemed that multiple principal, principal structures, uh, would typically require a special permit, in this case, it'd be a waiver.
Yeah.
Would it not, though, within the residential district that it exists in? That's why I didn't apply for it.
You know, I think the way the bio is written for commercial, this is an exempt use, so I'm not, I'm not sure it technically qualifies as a commercial use.
I just thought that might make Nan's question a little bit more, give it a little bit more bite to it, if you would.
I think, I think the condition that Nan's suggesting is definitely gonna cover it.
Yeah, I would agree.
I mean, as long as it goes back through a review, if you change what you're doing there, because that review process can deal with the, what can you do based on the available parking? And how are you going to get an agreement to get enough parking for what you want to do?
Good.
And that, that's my only concern.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. All right, one more shot. There we go. We keep, keep coming up with people to talk.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. My name is Kathleen Elson. I'm from twenty-nine Tobin Avenue.
Yep.
And I have lived in this area with the exception of a few years, my entire life. The temple has always been a good thing. However, with the signage on streets to prevent people who would otherwise either park or drive through an area, um, I can attest does not work. I have three signs on my road from the Middlesex Inn saying "dead end." And during events...
Yeah.
I have had people actually drive into my front lawn and almost take out my front stairs because they were pissed. It was not a thruway. Even though there are three signs saying "dead end, do not enter."
Yeah, well, yes, I, I sympathize.
I, I think that the church or the, the temples should be able to do what they want. However, being a longtime resident and knowing the frustrations of trying to move around during those three events, um, I would just request that the temple make it more known to the participants of the events. And I understand it's hard when you're getting people from out of state and everywhere else, but if they're coming, then somehow they knew about the event and then they should know what is expected of the resident, from the residents around us.
Sure, thanks.
That's all.
Well, it sounds to me as if this, this issue is actually being addressed, uh, in a number of modest ways, so I think we're going to be as safe as we can be.
Right, just to add, I, I believe I mentioned it last time, but just also as a measure that we came up with when we met with Lieutenant Spence was to, um, there's a five-person security team that the temple has during these large events that when people come to the driveway, they will now be handed a map with instructions of how to get to Dolan Funeral Home, which they weren't previously, um, and instructions on the shuttle. So even though it was done by word of mouth before, if people still kind of drove up and then parked on the street, now they'll be able to get a map with easy directions to how to get over to Dolan's, how to get the shuttle back, and, um, it'll help educate people too.
Very good. Thanks, Katie. Okay. Last chance. All right, we have, believe it or not, a motion that's been sitting here waiting to get voted on.
I'll do it again.
It was, okay. Moved and seconded. All in favor? This is closing the, uh, public hearing.
Aye.
Closed, okay. Public hearing is closed. So, folks. I presume you would, uh, write this one up, Evan?
Yeah, bring it to your next meeting.
I think we can, well, obviously, we'll take the, uh, the will of the board, but my, my take is that we could, uh, go ahead and approve this now and, subject to a review of the final write-up, if that's okay with everybody here?
You have a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, have motion to approve, second, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Got your, got your approvals. And we'll, uh, we'll look at that, uh, next meeting, Evan, if you get a chance to put that together. Okay. Now, off Tobin Ave, SGC Development.
Is it in the hallway, dude?
Yeah, it's probably in the hallway.
Yeah, probably.
Who's SGC?
That's, uh...
Bill Harvey.
Yeah.
He was at the last meeting about that.
Yeah, he was.
There he is.
Hey, Bill.
Good evening.
You're up.
I'm up. Very good. So what we have here is a sub, uh, definitive subdivision plan that's been submitted to the town with all the documents that you'd need, even, even documents that have been recorded with the registry. This, uh, parcel of land was purchased by myself a little over a year ago from the Arch Diocese of Boston. As you're aware, back in August thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen, it was an A and R plan approved by this board, which, which divided the property between the church and the new parcel, which is called Parcel A with the A and R plan. That plan consists of three point two-nine acres of land. And that's the parcel of land that will be, that was part, part of the subdivision plan that's being, uh, proposed. that's being proposed.
What's his name?
The identification of the land parcel ID with the town is 2050-4.
These aren't the plans. That's a plan, yeah. Oh, there's a plan in here. I like pictures. Okay, okay, here we go. Here we go.
I do have a few things I did.
Okay. While this is getting handed out, I think we have some letters to read.
Is this for me?
Legal notice, the Chemsford Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Wednesday, November 14th, 7:00 PM at the town offices to consider the application of SJC Development for a definitive subdivision located off Tobin Ave. The applicant requests definitive subdivision approval and applicable waivers under subdivision control law and the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in the town of Chemsford in Article 14 Aqua Fire Protection District Special Permit. The project proposes to create four new lots that will each contain a two-family dwelling with frontage via a new roadway. Site is located in the RC Residential Zone and District. Site is approximately 3.29 acres, as shown in an assessment map, 20 Block 50, Lot 4. Copy of the proposal is available in the Planning Board Office located at Town Offices 50 Bill Ricker Road, Chemsford, Mass. 0824, and may be viewed Monday through Friday between 9:00 and 4:00 PM. All interested parties are invited to comment in writing or may present any relevant information for the board's consideration at the public hearing on November 14th, 2018, per Mike Raizbacke, Chair. From the Town Engineer, dear members, this office has reviewed the subdivision plans by Hancock Associates, consisting of seven sheets dated September 19th, 2018, and a supplemental data report dated September 20th, 2018. Upon review of the plans and discussion with Town Council, this office has concerns with the applicant's lack of frontage on Tobin Ave. for the following reasons. Number one, the town-owned property at the end of Tobin Ave., Map Block Lot 20-50-42, has not been accepted as a public right-of-way. Number two, the language on the recorded plan that indicates Map Block Lot 20-50-41, AKA Lot T, is to be dedicated for street purposes, is not binding to the town. Number three, Lost Valley Drive is a private and further subdivision, is not permitted off a private road. Number four, there is no evidence showing express or implied easement for the benefit of the applicant. The applicant has no rights to cross over the town-owned property to access their property. If you have any questions, please contact this office. Sincerely, Christina Papadopoulos. This is legal from Town Council. Dear Chairman Raizbacke, present to a letter dated June 26th, 2018. I have been designated to review any applications filed by William Harvey III., which includes the application for definitive subdivision for property located off Tobin Ave. Filed by SGC Development LLC. Additionally, I have previously reviewed this matter for the Town Engineer Christina Papadopoulos, P.E., who has requested that I review whether the applicant has the right to cross over town property to access his proposed subdivision. After reviewing the deed and confirming with the applicant that his property was not part of the same chain of title as the town property, I determine that has no express or implied easement to cross over the town property to access his proposed subdivision. The town-owned property in question is located on Tobin Ave. The parcel was deeded to the town in 1987 pursuant to a deed recorded in the Middlesex North Registry of Deeds in Book 4433 at Page 251. Also recorded at this time was a plan showing the property lot as Lot T, with designation Lot T to be dedicated for street purposes. This conveyance was done as a part of the subdivision and a roadway was created over Lot T to serve the prior owners' lots on what is known as Lost Valley Drive. According to the Town Engineer, Lost Valley Drive remains a private road that has not been accepted by the town of Chemsford as a public way. Since this roadway is not a public way, and since the applicant does not have an express easement nor an implied easement, since he is a stranger to the chain of title, and that plan notation does not create easement rights to use the town's property, there is no right to access the proposed subdivision over this lot. Case law is clear that a subdivision can and should be denied if the applicant is unable to establish the right to construct roadways proposed as part of a subdivision. Parker v. Blackbrook Realty, 61 Mass. App. Court, Appeal, App. Court, 308, 310, 2004. However, the board may choose to conditionally approve the subdivision application with the requirement that the applicant establish the right to use and construct the proposed access road before a subdivision plan will be endorsed. The applicant may seek to obtain an easement from the town to use the town's property to access the proposed subdivision. Such easement would require approval of the town meeting. The applicant could also choose to provide alternative access to the proposed subdivision, does not involve the same issues regarding the right of access. If the applicant does obtain a clear right to access the proposed subdivision, I would have no further concerns regarding this proposal. If you have any questions regarding this correspondence, please feel free to contact me. Very truly yours, Paul Haverty. And that is it.
That is it. Now, we had the question brought up, did we at one point, earlier on, because I think this is the second round for this, is it not? Did we read the letters at that point?
No, we didn't read anything.
No, absolutely.
Why don't you go take a look and see what you...
No, I didn't see any.
Okay, we'll look, okay?
Yeah, there was nothing else, that's why.
All right, good. Then I guess we're covered.
Yeah, okay, if there was more, okay.
Okay, sounds good. Mr. Harvey, go ahead, we have, I think we framed the one most important issue of this in that last letter, so... Tell me what your pleasure is.
Well, my pleasure is to go forward, obviously. So, what I'd like to present to you is, number one, is a copy of the A&R plan that was approved by this board in August. And then, secondly, the definitive subdivision plan that was noted regarding Lost Valley Drive. So, excuse me.
It's Bill.
Yep. I'm sorry, I missed the end. Close here.
Yeah, you got two here, two different. Sorry, two different ones? Yeah, one's different.
Yeah, he's got two different.
Yeah, two of the same, that's all right. I can't talk much, but I can...
Okay, so let's start from the beginning. Ready?
Yep.
We'll start from the beginning. So, we'll start with the Lost Valley Drive, which is no longer called Lost Valley Drive. It's actually, the address is Tobin Street. And it's the address for both of those condo units, 2527 and 2325 Tobin Street. So, my history of doing the title on this property was that Lost Valley Drive was constructed through a subdivision plan that was approved by the Planning Board in August 14th, 1985. And the owner of Lot P, Lot J, also owned Lot T. And when this subdivision plan was brought to the town's attention, there was an agreement by the builder that Lot T would be dedicated to the town of Chemsford for street purposes. So, we got some information from the Town Engineer, it sounds almost like, let's see, legal opinion. So, there's no express or implied right, she states, that anybody has a right to cross over it. So, if that was the case, the owners of the condominiums at Lost Valley Drive wouldn't have the right to cross over it, because there's no easement stated on the plan, just like was stating in the Town Council's letter, there's no easement. Lost Valley Drive is a private way, which I don't have a right to go over. I don't wanna go over Lost Valley Drive, we can see it from the plan. Lot T is the access that I wanna go over to my property. Now, Lot T, in, Lot T specifically states, there's nothing implied, it's direct. Lot T to be dedicated for street purposes. That's the plan that was approved in 85, when I came before you with the A&R plan that was also included in my A&R plan, that showed Lot T to be dedicated for street purposes. So, furthermore, through my research on this, is the deed. Let's take a look at the deed. The deed specifically states, it's Book 4433251, and I have a full copy, there's no pages missing, and it's actually recorded at the registry. Being said Lot T, so H.J. Allen, Inc., sold to the town of Chemsford, and it's described as sold, said Lot T containing 11,111 square feet of land according to said plan. Being a portion of the premises conveyed to the grantor by J. Paul Benaview, by deed dated March 6th, 1986, recorded with the registry, and has a specific book and page. Furthermore, if that's not, and of course, the plan is directly related to the deed. In addition, I have a copy of a covenant. Now, the covenant specifically states... Excuse me. Okay, covenant, fourth paragraph, whereas Lot T, as shown on said plan, is to be dedicated for street purposes. So, that's directly related to what the purpose of Lot T is. There's no easements, there's no right-of-ways, there's no plans, there's no private driveway or private way going through Lot T on the plan. So, I suggest that the plan is what it is, that the entire parcel was dedicated for street purposes. Furthermore, just to be on the safe side, I got the minutes of the meeting, of the Planning Board meeting dated June 26th of 1985. Now, read this. 7:45, Public Hearing, Tobin Ave. Mr. McCarthy, reading the public hearing legal notice, Mr. Paul Benaview was the applicant. He is asking for two lot subdivision on Tobin Ave. Lot T will be for street purposes. They will construct the cul-de-sac, and the cul-de-sac relates to Lost Valley Drive, which is now Tobin Avenue, and prepare a street acceptance plan. They will have two duplexes on the lots, period. And there was two individuals from the abutting properties that had some questions. Mr. McCarthy closed the public hearing. Again, there's no mention about any specific easements, rights that are only for a specific in a butter, such as Lost Valley Drive. It's completely open in the plan, as well as all the decisions, as well as all the deeds, that this parcel is dedicated for street purposes. Now furthermore, I also decided to do a little title exam on the duplexes that are located at 23-25 Tobin, not Lost Valley Drive, and 27-29 Tobin. And within those deeds, references at the end, and together with the right to travel over Lot T, Tobin Avenue, may be used for all purposes which the public ways may be used in the town of Chemsford. Now, you all know that we have plenty of roadways in the town of Chemsford that aren't accepted. We have attended town meetings where those parcels have been brought to the attention by DPW and been voted on to make them as public ways. So the mere fact that they're not accepted ways certainly does not mean that we don't have a right to travel down them. In addition, the town plows Lot T, and Lot T is not a parcel of unimproved land. It's actually about 75% pavement. So, when the idea came up that Lot T, that dedicated for street purposes, didn't mean dedicated for a street purpose, I didn't know what to say. So that's why I did the research, and it's common sense, and I know you all have common sense. But let's go, let's take a little step further. Let's get the definition of what dedicated means from the Webster Dictionary. Dedicated, devoted to cause, ideal or purpose. Synonyms, constant, devoted, devout, faithful, fast, good, steadfast, steady. That's the definition of dedicated. Now, let's take a look at the definition of street. A passage cleared for public vehicle travel. Well, I've been down Tobin Ave, all the way down to the end, and I can travel it in my motor vehicle, and I don't need a truck, and it's all paved, and you can go straight over to 2725 Tobin Street, which was called Lost Valley Drive, they have a right to go over it. I have a right to go over it, every member here has a right to go over it. So, that's the definition of street. So, definition of purpose. Something set up as an object or end to be attained. So I think it's really clear what this was, what this meant. So I have a copy, what I'd like to provide you, is the meaning of the minutes, that I'm sure that those letters that were written to you by the individuals were never reviewed. So to make it clear, I have no intention whatsoever, as one of the letters stated, that I ever intend to go over the private way. Lost Valley Drive is a private way. Lost Valley Drive, in the statement, the covenants, was that Lost Valley Drive would never be built out, meaning another lot, because it was a waiver of the cul-de-sac. That covenant does not reference Lot T, that it's, it references... That covenant does not reference Lot T, that it's, it references Lot T, that Lot T can never be subdivided. And the plan that's before you isn't requesting this board in any way to subdivide Lot T. So that was my research relative to Lot T. I didn't see anything that restricts any use of it, other than the stated purpose. There's no other implied purpose that you can imply when you look at all the documents I provided, the deed, the plan, the covenant, and the subdivision plan for Lost Valley Drive. And furthermore, you should take into consideration also that Lost Valley Drive isn't Lost Valley Drive, it's actually Tobin, and the address is a Tobin. And the individuals that own the property go over Lot T in order to access their property without any easement. So that's my response to Lot T. Now with regards to the subdivision plan, this is a subdivision plan that I didn't rush into, and I don't rush into most, most of the plans that I do. It was thought out, it was thought out well over a year to decide what was the best and appropriate use for this, this land. It was not, wouldn't have a very strong impact on the neighborhood, and would keep in concept with a residential feel of the neighborhood. So there was two ideas. The first idea was to build single-family dwellings, but obviously based on the cost of the land, the infrastructure of building a, a private way, the water, the sewer, and all the expenses, um, the most I could put on there would be four sing, four or possibly five single-family dwellings, but most likely four. And that didn't work out. And I was also thinking about possibly going to the Board of Appeals and asking for single-family dwellings, very small ones, such as Stone Gate, possibly fourteen-hundred square-foot house, starter home for somebody in the community, which is very hard to attain today. But once again, that would be expending money on something where I'd be requesting relief, where the board might not approve of it. And therefore I decided, with the time, the resources, and the investment in this property, that I should just go forward with something that is as of right. And with this parcel of land, it's zoned our C. And it's a large parcel of land, and originally, I attempted to possibly put five duplexes on the land, but it was, to me, it was, took up too much green space, the buildings were too close, and it certainly didn't look very adequate, and I don't think that this board would have liked it. And I think that the board would have asked me to reduce it to four buildings, and so I didn't want to go that route. So I went, and I reduced it to four duplex dwellings. And as you may see in the town, that there's been a lot of condominiums, duplexes that have been built. And most of them, I consider, and I saw, because they're built as townhouses. There's nothing friendly about them, there's nothing residential about them. You have the garage on the, in the middle, excuse me, you have the garage on the first floor, second floor you get the family room, and you go up to the third floor, which is bedrooms, and then you have an attic. So they're obviously well off the ground, they're not very appeasing, and they certainly wouldn't fit in well with this neighborhood. Going down Tobin Avenue, on your right-hand side, you have older single-family dwellings. They've been in the families for a long time. Although the houses are old, they're all kept up very nice. The lawns are kept up nice, the people keep their houses kept up. And then on the left-hand side, are two-family condominiums. So, and then obviously at the end of Tobin, you have two separate dwellings, which was shown on the plan, that was a subdivision back in eighty-five, um, where there are two duplexes. So, what I've done in town is, I do have a, a nice plan. It was a plan that I submitted to all the, the abutters on Tobin Avenue, um, with a copy of the proposed structure, and also a copy of the subdivision plan, and contact information on my part, as well as my engineer, if there was any question. So, I did send out a community outreach letter, although not required, it's something that I do, uh, just so I have a feel from the neighbors of exactly what they'd like. So what I've done is I've attempted to try and create as much green space as possible. I'm not going to be touching any trees or vegetation, whether it's, um, wild trees or any type of like grown brush between the dwellings of, uh, the new dwellings and also the backyards of the dwellings on Tobin, in order to have some privacy. And I'd also be willing to provide fencing to the neighbors, and I'd also reached out to a couple neighbors where I was willing to provide them with land, because as you can see from the, the subdivision plan, the lots are oversized. Legally, they only need to be twenty thousand square feet. If the neighbors on Tobin Avenue, they have a small backyard, if there was any communication that they would have with me, that they'd like to increase their backyard in order to get rid of brush, leaves, things like that, that wouldn't have been any concern to me. I could easily submit an A and R plan after this plan's been approved, and possibly provide those neighbors with up to five, sometimes up to eight thousand square feet of land in the back. In addition to that, I'd also be open to providing an easement, the two duplexes that were built on Lost Valley Drive. And the easement would be a sewer easement. For some reason, those two duplexes, obviously consisting of four units, are on septic. They've never been, they've never been tied into the town. For what reason, I don't know. I inquired with the DPW, and it was never, uh, provided with an answer. And again, with regards to helping the neighbors out, helping those condos, I could give them an easement through one of, through my property, and tie into my sewer line. In addition, I had the opportunity to speak with Bruce Harper of the North Chelmsford Water District. Bruce, uh, Mr. Bruce Harper was kind enough to sit down with me and review this subdivision plan, and he made recommendations that he'd like to see, um, in order to help his water district. And what he explained to me was that throughout many, many years, that they've had problems on the end of John Street with the water, and that's a dead end, it's called. So the water just goes to the dead end where the fire hydrant is, and they'd have to pump that out every year. He asked me whether it would be possible, at my own expense, if I could connect water from the top of John Street, bring it down into my development to connect to my water, and my water obviously comes from Tobin. So it would be a direct flow. The water would be flowing all the time, and there wouldn't be any issues with the North Water Chelmsford District, uh, North Water District anymore. So we came up with a plan that was approved by Mr. Harper, whereby, at my own expense, I would run a line up to John Street and connect it to my own water line. So, there's been a lot of in-depth research, there's been a lot of ideas in order to make this concept appropriate in the town, appropriate to the neighbors, appropriate to the, um, the departments. I also had an opportunity to speak with, um, uh, the captain of the Fire Prevention Office, and he did submit a letter. I do have a letter here from the North Chelmsford, as well as, um, the captain, which I'd like to have read on record, which hasn't been done. I also have a letter from the police with no concerns.
Take a look and see if we have copies. Let's take a look and see if we got copies of them in here, I'm not sure we do. Okay, well then let's get these recorded.
The police department has no comments. Chelmsford Fire Prevention. Dear members of the board, hydrant locations shown on this plan are adequate. The Chelmsford Fire Department requires a hydrant within five hundred feet of every building for manual firefighting operations. Hydrants shall be free from landscape obstructions. The applicant has provided this office with a plan that shows adequate access for firefighting apparatus and emergency vehicles. All fire lanes shall be marked with the approved pavement markings and/or approved signage. Fire access roads and turnarounds shall be designed with sweat path analysis using the A A S H T O B U S dash forty-five turn-in template. Fire apparatus access shall be designed by a registered engineer to withstand the weight of fire apparatus. No storage shall not obstruct or impede fire access or turnaround. The applicant must submit an application to the fire chief, Gary Ryan, with three choices for a street name. The applicant must also submit an application to the Town of Chelmsford E-dash-nine-one-one Committee for addresses through its coordinator, Town Clerk Trish Derserres. This office would approve of this plan with these conditions, and I ask the board to make this letter part of the approval process. Respectfully submitted, Captain Dan Katusis. From the North Chelmsford Water District. Dear board members, the North Chelmsford Water District has reviewed the applicant's proposal to construct four two-family dwellings off of Tobin Ave. The North Chelmsford Water District will supply water with the full understanding that the applicant shall follow the rules and regulations of the North Chelmsford Water District and the Chelmsford Fire Department's requirements, and agree to the following conditions. One, the two-family dwellings will have separate sleeved one-inch water services for each unit and be separately metered. Two, each unit will be charged with an entrance fee, eight in total. Three, the new six-inch water main will be looped from Tobin Ave, as shown on Plan S.K. zero-one, dated eleven-nine-two-eighteen, and tied into the existing six-inch cast iron water main located on John Street. All costs will be paid for by the applicant. Four, all materials, inspections, overhead entrance fees, tap-in of domestic water service, et cetera, will be coordinated through the North Chelmsford Water District. Sincerely, Bruce Harper, Senior Superintendent.
Thank you.
All right, furthermore, I have a photograph of, that I provided to my legal abutters, of what the duplex will look like, the floor plan, and I've built this before. Um, I built, this is a photograph of a condex I built at twelve-dash-fourteen Plum Street, which was a vacant parcel of land. This was actually not the plan that I decide, that was, I was going to build. The plan was much bigger, but I had a legal right to build what I was proposing to build, but I talked to my neighbors. Talked to my neighbors before I started, um, to apply for the building permit, and asked them what their recommendations are, if they liked the plan. And I had a negative response. They stated to me it was way too big, they didn't like it, it didn't fit in well with the neighborhood. So I took the plan, and I brought it back to my architect, and what we did was we shrunk it down. So, we shrunk it down quite a bit, and this was the plan that we came up with. It's a plan that I spoke with my neighbors about. It's a plan that doesn't have windows on the side. I was, my neighbors are concerned about privacy, there's no windows on the side. Um, so I think that should be, um, taken into consideration. So what we have here is a building that will be sixty feet wide, and it's thirty feet in depth. What it provides is a very nice building, a building that is residential looking, um, it doesn't look commercial, it's built high, with high-quality materials, like I did on Plum Street. And it's essentially an affordable place to live in the town of Chelmsford. And what we have right now is we get a large vacant parcel of land, um, that hasn't been used. The Saint John's Church hired the same engineering firm I did, there was concept plans that they worked with, um, before they sold it to myself. And this is the plan of the condex that I would propose. It certainly is a much nicer plan than a typical townhouse, which, um, I've run numbers, and a townhouse would be much less expensive to build, but it's not my preference. My preference is, is to do a really good job in the town, to have a really good development. So when I come back before you, you'll see that I've done a good job, and you'll know my word is my word. So that's what we're proposing. Um, it's a three-bedroom unit with, um, two-and-a-half baths, and with a one-car garage. And with regards to the plan, is I took the specific measurements that I did over at, um, Plum Street with regards to the driveway width, and the driveway width and the depth is more than adequate parking for two units. In addition, on the plan, which my engineer is here, he'll, uh, go over the plan more in depth, the plan also calls for, um, additional private parking, which I, I understand that the board likes, um, when there's questions about, um, friends coming over, relatives, um, where are they going to park? So we did come up with some parking alternatives off the house. All the units would obviously be under a HOA, be a condominium development, there'd be strict bylaws with regards to maintenance, the maintenance of the road, the, um, the landscaping, the maintenance, and I think that's extremely important, because when you do go down on Tobin Avenue, and you look at the condominiums that were created on the left-hand side, um, you'll see that they are in, um, most of them are in disrepair, they've been run down, um, they need significant repair. And so, that's the purpose of having strong bylaws, and I think that's what will help with this. So my engineer is here, um, this evening, his name is Brian Gudrow from Hancock Associates, and he will go over the engineering aspect of this plan, and if there's any questions that you need to ask him, you can. But at this point, if there's any questions that you'd like to ask me, um, I'm here and I'm willing to answer those questions.
Anybody on the board, I, I'll make a comment or two if nobody else will. Actually, there's a, there's a fair bit of merit in this. Uh, I think though, that, uh, we're going to have to focus in on the particular problem of the access. Uh, now I've, I look at it, and, uh, clearly these two houses that are already there have access over this, and it comes, I believe, out of the, originating out of the same parcel, On the other hand, dedicated for street purposes does not mean that it is a street, it means that that was the intent, perhaps. So I think about as far as we could reasonably go as a board, would be to grant conditional approval, subject to appropriate arrangements with the town, uh, which I guess is the owner of this Lot T, um, for, um, for access. I don't think that's access that we can grant. And, uh, so that's, I think, where the, where the big worry is going to be. This might not be a bad time, uh, to consider that a little bit further. I don't know if Town Council has any comments he would like to make.
Again, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Paul Haverty, Blatman-Babrowski and Haverty, Town Council. Um, I guess I would like to echo, um, Mr. Chairman, your comment, that there is certainly some merit with regards to the proposal. I was particularly intrigued, um, by the suggestion that both water and sewer existing issues can be alleviated, um, as part of this development. I think that would be a very nice, um, thing to be able to bring to the town and to the neighbors, um, who may be suffering from that lack of water pressure, or because they're still on a septic system that may hamper their ability to sell their house in the future. However, that doesn't change my concerns with regards to whether or not there is the right to access over the town parcel. There's only one way in which to create a public way, um, now, there's ancient ways that have existed before this process, um, ever came in, but this is nineteen eighty-five when this happened, this is well after that. This is well after that time. In order for something to become a public way, it has to be approved by town meeting. Requires a two-thirds vote of town meeting. The subdivision that this board approved tonight did not approve a public way. It approved a subdivision roadway that perhaps in the future will be brought to the town for acceptance as a public way. So, lacking that status as a public way, the next question is, are there any private rights to use this particular property to access that subdivision? I asked the applicant previously whether or not his parcel had come out of the same chain of title, which could, in theory, have created implied easement rights. However, they're from two separate, two separate chains of title, they're strangers in title. Therefore, you couldn't have had any implied rights, which is, will be different from the existing condos who did come out of the same chain of title. So even if there was an argument that there was no express easement created as part of that transaction, certainly there can be an argument that they have an implied easement, although the question of whether or not those existing parcels have the rights to use that roadway was not something I was asked to look into, so I didn't go any further than that. But what I did look at is whether or not this particular property has rights. I looked at case law. I consulted my partner, Mark Babrowski, who is literally the person who wrote the handbook on zoning and planning law in Massachusetts. And I asked him specifically, is there a way that you can create rights in the public to use a roadway simply by designating it in a deed as to be dedicated for public use? He said, there is not. I looked for case law. I found no case law to the contrary. I'm certainly open to suggestions otherwise. If there is any citations that the applicant would want me to look at, I'm happy to look at them. But as of right now, my opinion continues to be that there is no public right to use what is now referred to as Tobin Ave.
Yep. Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Yeah. All right. Certainly meshes with my impression. Anybody else want to comment?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I would say there are two ways in which the applicant can accomplish his goal of obtaining these rights. One of them, you know, which would certainly grant full relief that he's looking for, which is to get an express easement from the town, which would require first going to the Board of Selectmen's, getting their support, and then coming to town meeting and getting a two-thirds approval for the grant of an easement. A second way would be to actually apply or ask the town to accept the existing roadway as a public way. I don't think that that would get the full relief because the existing way doesn't encompass everything in which the subdivision plan shows. There are aspects of this that are a little outside of that existing way, so you would need to go a little further, and that would, again, require the easement.
Gotcha. Yeah, it struck me as well, even, even if that were approved, the proposed road coming in
Correct.
would not actually abut except on one corner, one point, the, what could conceivably be an approved road. I don't think that's necessarily a bad path to follow. I, gee, I don't know what the Board of Selectmen's inclination would be on this. I don't know if there's been any conversation about it.
I'm not aware, Mr. Chairman. What I would note is, as I noted in my letter, outside of this issue, I have no concerns with regards to this proposed development.
Okay. It's kind of my feeling, too. Anybody else on the board care to?
I kind of don't want to weigh in on this till we have wording on this issue here.
Okay.
I, I just think it's, it's some clarification.
At this point, we have an opinion. I think, I think what would have to be done next would be something to create, to create appropriate, an appropriate amount of title or access to allow that road to be built, and I don't think that's something that we can grant.
The board certainly does not have the right to grant easements.
Yeah.
I got a question. This is for Mr. Harvey. You abut, your, your property abuts John Street, which is a public way where you're gonna pick up the water line. Was there ever any thought given to you in the early parts of this of accessing your property off of John Street?
That's a good question, Mr. Rue. You know, thank you for asking that question. Absolutely, that was the first option, John Street. The issue with John Street, and that'll be possibly further looked into, is for the purpose of the neighborhood, the town, in public interest, is John Street is an extremely narrow street. There's soccer fields there, and there's also an extremely high drop that goes into my property. Yes, you can access that, but the most ideal and appropriate, safe way to access my property would be on Tobin, just as the individuals on Lost Valley Drive that don't have an easement through the Board of Selectmen or the town meeting cross it. So, yes, the access to my property on a public way can go down John Street. The neighbors on that street probably won't be too happy about it. I don't think it's in the best interest of the town having it that way, but if that's the route that I'll have to go, unfortunately, that's the route. And with regards to, you know, the additional expenses, the plan will most likely have to change. But if that's the route, that's the route, and that's what we'll do. But like I said, it just, it kind of bewilders me that if there's no express or implied easement to go over Lot T, Lost Valley Drive, which is obviously Tobin, is. There's a lot of benefits that I just said that, that will benefit the town. You know, we have the issue with regards to water, with the issue with sewer, with the issue with regards to...
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, I, I see the benefits, unfortunately.
I don't understand on that.
I'll get there.
On that Lot T, it looks, it looks as if there's already a T turnaround built into that where Lost Valley Drive ties into it. If you look at your, the, the plan on your, your white packet here in the background of the fire apparatus road, it shows a T built in there.
Correct.
You can see that T is our, is there in pavement. And looking at that, it clearly looks like the intent of this whole thing was to use that as street or road or a cul-de-sac. And typically, when you put a T turnaround in, you'd get approval for a cul-de-sac and waive the construction of the cul-de-sac and put a T turnaround in for fire apparatus. If that was the case, that cul-de-sac would have taken up that whole parcel of land and abutted the applicant's property. And I, I think that was the intent of that, of that whole thing.
And it specifically states it in the covenant, Mr. Cole, if you read it.
It says it right on it.
That it's to be built out according to street purposes, to be approved by the board, and it was.
And it's a subdivision plan going on to what looks like about an eighty-foot layout for a road instead of a thirty or forty foot. It's, it's a wide parcel of land for street purposes. It's, I don't understand it. It, it seems to me like that, that's what it was laid out for, that's what it was designed for.
That could have been a turnaround before they made that Valley Drive, though.
Right. Could have been a cul-de-sac there.
Right. It was just a turnaround for, to get out of that street.
Looks like it was.
Okay, well, you know, there, I, I think way back when, there was some, some intent, but it, I'm not sure that that intent is solidified into actuality. Nancy?
Question from Mr. Harvey. Bill Pearly Ave, is that built out to your property?
No, it's not. Actually, I did look into that. Pearly Ave is not built out. That's just...
It's a right of, town right-of-way.
It's a private way, which would gain access to my property also.
Says "public" on here.
Pearly?
That's what it says.
Private twenty feet wide?
Yeah, but I'm, what I'm looking at says "public twenty feet wide."
Oh, mine says "private twenty wide."
Yeah, she's looking on the, the town plan.
Oh, the town plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have the town plan. So, Pearly Ave, if that is a public way, it's not built out.
Doesn't help you if it's not built out. I was just wondering whether you could
Not necessarily.
A street that connected from John to Pearly, a loop that was a one-way loop.
Well, no, Pearly, Pearly, Pearly is built down, I'd say, a hundred and fifty feet, and there's a house on the right-hand side. So it hasn't been built out all the way. If I would have, you know, if the board would, would ever consider, you know, me building Pearly Ave out, paving it, making obviously significant improvements to Pearly Ave, which it seriously needs to access my property, that'd be a great consideration. But then again, you know, if you'd be leaning towards that, I'd like to get that feedback because, you know, when you change these plans, it gets expensive. So I wouldn't want to come in with another plan with Pearly Ave, and then it'd be some opposition to it for some reason when I could be coming in with a plan for John Street, which I really don't want to do. It's really not beneficial to the neighborhood, but Pearly Ave is a viable alternative.
Well, you know, again, I, you think you're looking for, legitimately looking for some, some things that I don't think this board can grant. Yeah.
Again, this board has already granted Lot T for street purposes.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to Pearly Ave, obviously I haven't had opportunity to look into that issue, but if it is a public way all the way up to the property line, and the town has rights in it, and the town has the right to construct it the rest of the way, that's something that I can certainly look into.
Yeah, that, I think that might make some sense.
And I mean, I don't know if that resolves problems or not, but I can certainly look into the legal aspects of whether or not there is a right for the town to allow Mr. Harvey to extend it all the way to his property.
I think, I think it might make some sense to take a quick look at that. I mean, there, there basically, access is the whole issue here. There are three possibilities of access. Each one has its own set of problems, and I don't think this board particularly cares which method of access is used as long as it's legitimate.
Certainly, from my perspective, all I care about is the legal aspect of it. The engineering side of things, you know, or the planning side of things, certainly within your purview, it's not within mine.
Yeah, because I'm certainly not...
Would the residents get the benefits of the sewer and the water, too, if you went in through Pearly?
I would presume.
So, I mean, I think you have to weigh all of it.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may remark on some of the discussion that was occurring recently. I, I think the points with regards to the difficulties and the impacts associated with extending from John Street might be a good selling point in terms of seeking relief from the town.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking that, too. I think that the town, I, I think the applicant and the town are gonna have to talk in some, at a fairly deep level about what can be done here. I think the, the development itself, I think, makes perfectly good sense, and I certainly have no objection to it as it's presented, other than that.
Why is to ask the applicant if he's in favor of doing that?
I think it would.
Getting a conditional...
I'm sorry, I was talking to my engineer. I just missed a parcel of it. If you could just...
A conditional approval will approve the project as it stands pending...
Resolution of the access issue.
I'm not sure that does any good.
Negotiations with the selectmen or whatever to...
No, that's not gonna happen. That's not gonna happen, no. No. That's not gonna happen. This, this is a project that needs to get going. It's a project that I've spent considerable money on. I'm not gonna be going before the Board of Selectmen.
He just mentioned Pearly Ave, though. Would that be a consideration, or?
I'd, you'd have to ask that, you'd have to ask that question with my engineer because it's up, it's up to the engineers, more than likely, you know, probably get a negative review again from the town engineer. So, it's up to my engineer. He'd have to figure that out. If you could take the microphone.
I just, I just don't understand how you can have one development coming off of it through the town-owned piece of land, and it states it's a street, but yet
Street use.
parcel next to it can't use that same privilege. And the parcel in the back doesn't have, doesn't have a, any form of easement or anything going across it. The same as the applicant wouldn't have any easement going across it.
So, Mr. Chairman, as I pointed out previously, those two condo structures in the back came from the same chain of title as the town property, and in fact, the, the transaction that created all of this, you know, they specifically reserved the right to access over the town property. That was part of the deal, and them deeding that parcel to the town was that they would continue to have the right. I believe it's an express easement. I could look at it closer, but if it isn't, there's an implied easement because it's being shown on a way. That's all because they are part of the same chain of title. That would not extend to people who are not part of that chain of title because they're, they're outside of that.
But if you have a parcel of land to be used as a street, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call it as a layout of a street. It's a wide, stupid-shaped layout for a street, but it's my understanding that they're saying that this is a layout for a street to get to Lost Valley Drive.
And my, my interpretation of that is they were reserving the right to cross over that parcel as necessary to access their back parcel. Not necessarily reserving the entirety, but as necessary. And, and I believe there was a plan that went with it that showed where that would be.
Seventy percent of it, yeah, as, as road to get across there. So I just don't understand why a subdivision plan that abuts a row, a, a, a street layout can't, they can't add on to that street layout for a subdivision. Didn't we just talk about this a half an hour ago?
Well, no, we didn't. We had a public way that actually extended directly to the property line. So if we had evidence that there was a public way that extends right to this property line, I would be a hundred percent agreement that this applicant can do the same thing that the previous applicant did.
But being called a street is not the same as a public way.
Calling it, yeah. Just a second. Calling it a street is kind of irrelevant unless it's been accepted as a street.
The only way for it to be accepted as a public way is to go through town meeting and get that two-thirds vote. The only way for there to be a grant of an easement right to someone who is outside of that chain of title would be to get a specific grant of an easement from the town, again pursuant to a two-third majority in town meeting vote.
Is it, is it a road that is plowed and taken care of by the town?
That does not mean that it's a public way.
Yeah.
It happens frequently throughout the Commonwealth, that there are roads that are private that are maintained by municipalities.
In addition to which, it would have to be actually laid out, engineered, and constructed as a street up to the property line to, to actually be a street that goes to the property line, and that's not what we're seeing here.
Yeah, but it could be a paper, it could be a paper road.
But we're just speculating here.
Yeah, but I'm not seeing a paper road on this plan.
Why can't we just wait till we get Town Council and the town to give us a direction on what to go?
I think we've got the opinion of Town Council.
We're gonna vote on a project that we don't even know if he can access it.
I'm not even sure we're gonna vote on this project.
That's what I'm saying.
And that's why I, I am asking the applicant whether a, a conditional acceptance of this would be worth the effort because we can't grant the access
Right. I think we should do due diligence, then come back.
Well, I mean, even with due diligence, we're not the people that grant that access.
I mean, get everything approved from the town selectmen and the town.
So I, I think the question here is, does the applicant want us to go forward with a finding on this that cannot provide unrestricted approval to build this out because of this easement issue? Or does the applicant want to go away and rethink or reevaluate, take some time to reevaluate the plan, and come back with either a go-forward with the vote or a, I wanna, I wanna make modifications to my plan that's being presented?
Or negotiate some kind of adjustment.
Or negotiate some sort of adjustment that maybe, may simply be a withdrawal without prejudice in, to provide time to obtain access to the land.
Yeah. What do you want?
But I think that's a decision for the applicant.
Yeah.
Well, obviously, I'm not gonna be going forward with a, a vote tonight.
Yeah, it's probably safer.
Well, I know.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, maybe I should further reevaluate this and speak with my, you know, my engineer about it. And let's take a look at it, okay?
And by all means, speak with the town. It's not at all clear to me that you couldn't get this approved fairly easily.
But you can't do it until town meeting.
But you can't do it until spring town meeting, yeah.
An, an engineering question on that, coming in off of John Street. To get down to where the development wants to go, what percent grade would you be running there if you, if you weaved it a couple of times? Could you get it down to like a, like a 9%?
Well, if you look at where John Street's at right now, John Street is, John Street's about at elevation 150, and the road right now is at elevation, you know, 116.
Yeah.
So that's, that's 34 feet.
Yeah.
That's, that's quite a bit. So 300, 340 feet puts it down at 10%.
How long of a distance is that from the, from the roadway up to John Street? I don't have a scale on this, is it, is it a couple, couple, 200, 300 feet?
No, so I would estimate in the neighborhood of 150 to 200 feet. But if you look at the grades that were actually restricted by, by, you know, 521 CMR, fire code, state fire code, we're not allowed to build roads at greater than 10%. While there is subdivision regulations here in town that allow up to 12%, we would still have to get buy-in from, from the fire department to do that. So to come down from John Street's going to make it exceptionally challenging, and at a very steep slope, and potentially serpentine slope, serpentine alignment, to allow to kind of soften it. So our proposed entrance off of Tobin, parcel T, is the most ideal.
Makes the most sense. Yeah, and I can see that, that certainly makes sense.
May I just say something?
Yeah.
If, if the board is inclined, based upon the merits, to approve it with conditions, you should tell that to the applicant.
Yes.
The applicant once seemed that a vote tonight was not possible, and maybe he's thinking that a, a positive vote is not, is not necessarily possible as well. So I think if, if the board believes that the project has merits, and the only issue, one that you can't grant, is the access issue, I would make that very, very clear.
Yeah, and I, and I think, I think we're probably prepared to do that. I haven't done a straw poll, but, but I think that's about as far as we can go, given our, the scope of our powers.
Right. You know, my, my thought is, he's already done all the work, he's made a great presentation. Having the, having this approval is one option, and then he doesn't have to come back and revisit this option.
I'm perfectly willing to do that.
What does he have to do to get an easement across that piece of property?
Council said, uh, selectmen and town meeting.
Yeah, selectmen and town meeting.
For an easement, or for, or to make it a public way?
Either way.
Yeah, I'm not sure that making it a public way goes far enough, just because there are portions of what is proposed that is outside of the existing way.
Yeah.
So you would, you would need to be able to have the right to actually create that additional pavement area as well. So I think the easement approach is the correct approach. I, I do think the alternative access off of John Street sounds like a bad idea.
I guess it's.
So I, I, again, I would, I would reiterate that I think that's a good selling point for access over Tobin, following the proper legal requirements. Nobody wants to see an unsafe roadway put in there, even if it technically complies,
Right.
you know, with whatever requirements are applicable. And then the, the other potential road, I forget the name of the street now.
Pearley.
Pearley.
Yeah.
It, it, you know, we might want to see if the applicant wants me to spend any time looking into whether or not that it actually extends all the way to his property, and whether or not that's a viable alternative as well.
Okay. Well, okay, I, I think what we can offer is to take a vote, but it's going to be, anything we do is going to be subject to obtaining access that we cannot ourselves grant.
I'd like to point out that if we take a vote tonight,
Yeah.
we close this application, and if the applicant thereafter would deem to make any significant changes, they'd have, he'd have to come back under a new application.
The only pursuit.
Which is the only reason I'm thinking that.
Right, we'll get to that in a sec.
Yeah.
I don't think you have to be too.
You'd have to apply again.
Yeah.
You have to go through the expense of.
If, if we vote tonight and he wants to change this whole road structure, he has to be applied.
Well, that's not, that's not our call, the two.
I understand that's his call, that's why I'm putting it out there, though.
I appreciate, you're in-depth, look at this plan, I really don't. And the alternatives that may be provided. What I would suggest is that we continue the hearing. I'm not asking, I'm not asking for any type of vote on this. I'd ask for, to continue the hearing, so I could speak with my engineer, and we will work on a design for John Street, which is a legal access.
Right.
It's not the most appropriate one, unfortunately, but if I can talk to, you know, have my engineer do the work on it, talk to the fire department, and see what we could do with regards to the elevations, and try and make a safe roadway, that's the only access that we have. That's, that's what Mr. Raesback has said. I respect your knowledge, Mr. Raesback, with relative to the law resident attorney, and also the board. And I really appreciate that you've taken the time to really deliberate and take a look at all the documents I've submitted. So that's what I'd ask, is for continuance.
Okay, I think that makes sense, and under, under, in that situation, I believe we can, we can leave opening the public hearing to when we have continued, because this has been technical conversation so far, and I think that's probably the best way to do it, rather than to take public input tonight on a plan that may very well not be what ultimately shows up, yes?
I would like to say something.
Okay, hold on a second. Anna, what do you think? If we can, can we continue without public hearing?
I would like to just say one.
I know, I understand, hold on a second, and let me figure out what the legalities are here.
Mr. Chairman, the board is certainly within its right to continue a hearing without taking testimony from the public, or you could take limited testimony and then continue.
All right, we could do it either way. Okay, in that case, I will open the public hearing and go ahead and say what you would like to say, but recognize that what you may be looking at later on may look nothing like this.
That's fine.
Yeah.
My name is Peggy Simpson. I live at 24 Tobin Ave.
Yeah.
And I don't live in a slum, and no one on Tobin Ave lives in slums. And I am very offended by what went on here tonight. And I will say, Mr. Rue, that you asked the question I wanted to ask. John Street, why not use that instead of Tobin Ave? That man is one of the most obnoxious, unprofessional.
Let's not, let's not have any personal, personal attacks here, that's uncalled for. Do you have anything to add, given that we don't know what this plan might look like later?
I, I just would like to, to, I live on.
Please identify yourself for the record.
On common 14 John Street. I would like you to come up to John Street, drive down John Street, that is a very narrow road. Go to the end of that road and look over and see what that road's like.
Oh, I, I think we're well aware, we see the plan.
It's just to go down that type of a hill, you have Highland Ave. In the wintertime, we do not, any of our neighbors do not go down Highland Ave, that hill. You can't get down it, you can't get up it in the snow. Luckily, we can go the other way, but you can't, and it's going to be that same type of hill that would have to be built there, so.
I, I think we're getting a little bit ahead here.
Absolutely, absolutely, but I would like the board to look at this.
In front of us.
You wouldn't be able to build Highland Ave today.
No, you couldn't.
No, absolutely not. And I would hope that people would come and look and see
10%.
how wide John Street is.
Okay.
Which is, what's that, 10, 10 feet and 100? So in 100 feet, you can only come up
10 feet.
the height of this room, basically, in 100 feet.
Means nothing, third-grade teacher, I, I know other things.
Not much of a slope.
But I know what Highland Ave is like. I've lived there for 40 years.
Well, we have no, we do not have a complete plan that covers that in front of us, so we really can't go very far down that road.
Thank you.
Anybody else, okay? Gotcha, we'll get you on it.
We'll be done. Hi, my name is Bob Camo.
Yeah.
I live on Tobin Ave.
Yeah.
I live in Tobin Ave. My main concern is the water coming from, from the development. I, I have some pictures here of my property and the church, if I could pass.
Okay, can I, can I make a suggestion here? We don't have a plan in front of us.
Okay.
Really. I think your concerns are quite legitimate, and I looked at that slope, and I thought to myself, water, but.
Well, as it stands right now, behind my property,
Yeah.
the, the water comes right up to my property line, and it floods the church.
Mm-hmm.
And that's since they stripped some of the vegetation.
Yeah.
So if there's more of that going, going on.
Understood.
Uh, is there a plan?
Well, at this point, we, we don't have a complete plan in front of us, but that's a consideration that would, we'd have to take up.
Okay, I, I hope so.
When this comes back, presumably.
Okay.
In a couple of weeks, or a month, or whenever it.
Okay, good, but we will, we will certainly consider that. Okay, is there a way I can put these on the website?
Yeah, give a, give a copy right there to Colleen, she'll get it in the record.
These are four.
Then we'll have it.
Four pictures of my property.
Okay.
11, 12, 11.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
January 9th?
Uh, that might be the best, January 9th. Now, is there anybody else that wants to speak? I think until, well, there's going to be plenty more opportunity, because what we intend to do here is to continue the public hearing. So if you have something that pertains very generally, fine, but specifics of this project, we don't have in front of us yet.
I understand that, Mr. Chairman. And again, my name is Kathleen S.
Hasn't changed.
And I actually, at 4 Lost Valley Drive,
Yeah.
however, the town will not accept Lost Valley Drive. At the time it was done, it was because of the fact that the fire department and the police were saying there were too many private ways to be able to do that.
Okay.
And my address is Tobin Ave.
Mm-hmm.
It was under my understanding, when I brought that property back in 893, that I had not only an implied, but an expressed easement to get to my property. When I have come to town to talk to town about anything, everybody says to me, how do you get to your drive when you have to go through a house lock?
I, I, I think it's, I think it's pretty clear.
I'm getting, I'm getting off.
Yeah.
But I also wanted to put on the record that Mr. Harvey said that he approached us on Lost Valley Drive, and he has never once spoke to me.
That, that may well be. I think it's clear that you do have access to your property, by the way. For a number of reasons, I wouldn't worry. Okay, it looks like that covers it. I think what we need to do here is continue.
Motion to continue.
We have a motion to continue, we have a second to the, to the, January 9th. If you'll let, if you'll let Bill know. And that should give them some time to decide what they need to do. Very good, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. We got one more, a new public hearing for DFCU. Okay. Is there anybody here, ah, yes. And I'm going to, I'm going to suggest that, that our town council has suffered enough. Thanks an awful lot for coming, Paul. I appreciate that, really appreciate it.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
I got it, I got it.
All right, good evening, everyone, Katie Unright with Howard Stein Hudson. I'm here tonight on behalf of DCU at 297 Belrecker Road for a proposed generator and enclosure. I was here a couple of weeks ago, I'm going to keep it really short. Under the CEIOD, looking for applicability. The generator is a building that sits in the corner of the parking lot. Right in this location here, it covers about nine parking spaces in this location. You can see the Comcast building next door. This is just another view shed of it, you can see the trees that wrap around it, we're in this area here. So with that, actually, you don't have this memorized. The generator itself is, or the building itself is 51.3 by 13.5, with a pad of 63 by 14.5. The height of the generator structure is 13.75 feet, and there's an apparatus on top of it, which you can see in the enclosure plans that I provided to you. It's a standby generator to, to run the building. There's a 3,700-gallon sub-base tank for diesel fuel underneath the pad, which will power it. And the reason for the positioning is to really get it out of the way, as DCU proposes to bring more employees online in the building. We'll be looking to do a parking deck in the back area off the parking lot. So where we're proposing the infrastructure to get back out to this generator, the conduit, et cetera, we need to keep it outside of kind of the footprint of where we'd be looking to do that garage in the future. So with that, I believe we need, the reason we went with the, with the BAOD through the CEIOD process was because the site setback in an IA district is 40. It didn't make sense to move the generator 40 feet interior of the parking lot. So we are asking for a special permit to waive it down to just over 20 feet.
Okay.
And that's it.
Makes eminent good sense. Anybody have a comment? I mean, it sounds applicable to me. The zone is right, the usage is right.
It made perfect sense.
Yeah, so I would entertain a motion to, I'm sorry, you.
Question. Katie.
Wasn't quick enough.
You're losing parking spaces.
Correct. So that's the answer.
How many do you need, and how many are you going to have when you're done?
Right, so we had 530 that were approved, 521 were built, and we're going to have 512 after this. So essentially, at the, in the interim, when the building is not 100% full, the parking lot is pretty empty. So as people are brought on and they need additional parking, the garage will be in place.
But, but you need special considerations here.
Correct, that's right.
Because you're going to be under your requirement for parking.
Correct, so we're negative nine spaces from what exists there today because of this.
Nine out of 530 isn't a lot of percentage.
All right.
What are we looking for a motion for?
A, a public hearing as well.
Oh, yes, we do have some public. Would you like to talk about this?
I think it sounds well.
Well, I guess that's the end of our public hearing.
Make a motion to oppose the public hearing.
Okay, moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, I would, I would entertain.
A motion to approve.
Well, to, to, to.
This is to approve.
This is approved.
To approve, yeah.
Right, motion to approve said project.
With special permits.
With special permits.
And any letters?
And any letters.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think there are any letters that we found.
Yeah, Christina had a letter.
Any letters is fine. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second? Last chance? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Got it.
Thank you, good night.
Mercifully quick. Okay, and I do believe we have come very close to the end of this thing. I'll just make a couple of comments. I've been chatting with the Board of Health. They have suggested, they, this is on the chickens, of course. They have suggested to me that they might like to meet with us. I'm going to suggest maybe a 6:30 round, and it's going to depend on when they are free and available. I have a feeling it may take us out into January. But if you could get that one, at least tentatively, get it on the agenda, and I'll talk to Ann Marie and try to work.
Though we discussed that this wasn't planting wood.
Well, it isn't, but it, but we still have, we still have stuff in the zoning bylaw. The obvious, one of the ways to handle this is to get rid of the zoning content and turn this over to, although that's got other issues, too, that I'm busy dealing with. But they're not. Although that's got other issues, too, that I'm busy dealing with, but they're not zoning issues. Most of them are not zoning issues. So, they wanna talk to us, and I think that's not an unreasonable thing to do for another town board. So, I'll try to get them in here around January 9th. And we still haven't moved much forward on master plan. We will have to continue that, but, you know, think about how you might wanna be involved.
I would suggest that once the Route 40 Subcommittee is done...
Yeah, life will get easier.
Because right now, that's taking up time.
It's taking up three of us several months.
Once that's done, that we put together a Subcommittee to strategize.
I think that's exactly what we need to do.
To basically develop the plan for...
Yeah, I see. All the people involved in Route 40 are in violent agreement.
I don't wanna do both of them at the same time.
No, it's taking some time. It's making some progress, but it's taking some time. Okay. Anything else that anybody wants to bring up, other than...
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, hold on.
Any minute.
Oh, did we actually have it allocated?
It's just a regular meeting.
Okay, but you'd already put it on the list?
It doesn't matter. It's the 4th.
All right, then we'll cancel it.
Yeah, just so people know, we're not gonna be...
22nd, yeah.
All right.
All right, you'll take care of that.
Motion made.
Motion made in second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Done. Thank you.